All right, everyone's here. We're gonna get started here in just a few seconds. I think we have our city attorney. We're ready to go. All right. Time is six oh six P M. We are one hundred Polk Avenue here at the City Hall in Cape Canaveral for our regular June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting. I call this meeting to order and Councilmember Raymond, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, to the state, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis? Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Raymond?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Yeah, everybody's here. We're now at the public participation portion of our meeting. Any member of the public may address any items that do not appear on the agenda and any agenda item that is listed on the agenda for final official action by the City Council, excluding public hearing items, which are heard at the public hearing portion of the meeting, ministerial items, and quasi judicial or emergency items. Citizens will limit their comments to three minutes and we will not take any action today. So the the light here in front of me, when it goes green, you'll have three minutes. When it grows yellow, you got about thirty more seconds and we ask that you wrap it up when the light goes red. We do have folks that might be listening from home at our two-way participation. They'll just simply raise your hand and our deputy clerk, Daniel, will connect you to us live and we should be able to hear you with that. We'll actually, uh, go ahead. I've got some comment cards here today. Just wanna make sure none of these are public participation items. The first one I have here is from Morgan Hamby. It looks like you selected item number six. Would you like to speak now or wait till the item comes up? It is on the consent agenda, so um, I I, this item will be pulled. I know that, so you can wait then or you can speak now. Okay, thank you. I've got a Mr. John Bond. Items here. Hey, John, welcome.
Hi, John Bond, eighty-nine seventy-one White House. Love our city. And so, uh, Mayor, councilmembers, Todd, David, and John, everybody. Great to see everybody again. The, uh, what I'm gonna talk about, I don't know what David and Mickey were talking about and Angela, and was the, uh, the, 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 uh, blighted properties, okay? And not every property out there is blighted, but, and I, and I've had conversations with David and I, uh, whom I respect immensely. And but what I'm trying to do is get mixed-use zoning, uh, on the fast track. And so, because we really need that. If you wanna get the, if you wanna get some of these properties, and one in particular, um, is like the, uh, the old, uh, seventy-nine hundred North Atlantic, which is, uh, uh, which is the old Fanny's Fried Chicken for those people who don't. Okay, so, um, and there's a lot of other properties that need mixed-use zoning to take advantage of the, of the valuation of the property. And it'll also help with the, the tax, uh, um, increase the tax well. And with that, uh, I mean, I don't know very many cities that don't have it. It works. And so the only thing I'm doing is just asking, asking you guys just to put it, you know, on the front burner and get it done so that, uh, we can start doing some things and getting some of these properties redeveloped. So, thanks very much. Take care.
Thank you, John. I think we heard you loud and clear. Dave, you wanna say a comment?
Just quickly, um, great timing on that. The Planning and Zoning Board tomorrow night is scheduled to have a discussion item on mixed use. It's on their agenda, so there'll be some discussion there. And hopefully, the P and D Board will direct staff to prepare an ordinance for their consideration, which will ultimately get to the council. So that, that, that is definitely in the works. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I forget a little housekeeping. If we're all up here speaking, just make sure your light's on and we're speaking directly into the microphone. Haven't had any issues today, but I was supposed to remind everyone, so. All right, now we have Mr. Brad Prevell. Brad, it looks like you chose item number six as well. That item will be pulled. Do you wanna wait till we get to that item? Would you like to come up now? Got it. Same thing with you, Ms. Jenny Derska. Like to wait? Okay, thank you. Mister, let me see that one. Bill Hodge. Looks like none of the items on, but got your card here. Mister Hodge, how are you? Thank you.
Good. Bill Hodge, three-six-nine Coral Drive. Uh, I wanna get the attention back on the roundabout. I haven't heard any discussion from the city about that. I'd sure like to see it put on as an agenda item. I'd like to see the council vote on it, because the last council was actually pretty close to voting against it. The city manager said, well, we got plenty of time. It's not a hurry. If you think DOT is smart, you need to come over to State Road Three. The U-turn light there that they keep working on, it's still not right. Big trucks. I saw a fire truck today, had to back up. Could not make the U-turn. But there's a couple of other things over there, State Road Three, that he's working on. The, uh, A-one-A North Atlantic intersection, to me, is too small for a roundabout. Looks like that'd be shoe-worn in unless they really buy a lot of those. Businesses like Ace are getting on Long Point Road. I think it's gonna be very difficult to get in and out of those places if the roundabout goes in. Uh, I know studies show that the fatalities are down, but the studies also show that accidents go up. They may not be fatalities. I'd like the DOT to tell us how many fatalities they had at the intersection. I don't, I don't remember anything about a whole bunch of accidents there. I'd sure like to know them. And I'd really like to see an unbiased survey put out. One that says, do you favor a roundabout or do you favor the four-way stop line? You know, no bias of the safety information. And, uh, that's all I got. Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, one more. Right. To me, it's a serious misuse of tax money. Seventeen million dollars is total cost of what DOT is estimating now, of course, it'll probably go up. That's an awful lot of tax money. People say, well, it's not Canaveral tax, but that's a bunch of BS, because we all pay taxes. There's state taxes, federal taxes, local taxes. So this tax money, that money can be used to improve the other roads instead of just that one road, that one road intersection. In my understanding, that, that'll be done, it'll be years later before they do the other. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hodge. I think roundabout is something that we, um, we're all looking at, but, um, I, I do wanted to say one comment to our city manager on that. And, and just as a request here on the record is, um, but between now and the next meeting, perhaps we can get an update on how the progress is, is
We'll request that from FDOT.
Yes, and any workshops or anything like that would be helpful on, for me, but council, any other questions on the roundabout? I know we wanna keep moving through public comment, but. Okay. All right, thank you. Mister Anthony Graziums? I think I, Grazium? Okay, and so if I understand, you are echoing what Mister John Bond had said on the desire for mixed-use zoning? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, and Mister John Benton? Hello, John?
How you doing, Wes?
Doing good, thank you.
Okay, well, we know why I'm here. I got an email from Todd when I was there in Arizona, and I'm here to get my code reduction here. I was promised a code reduction hearing at the very first council meeting I came to, and that was with Rocky Randall. So he told me to go see Todd and the city manager. We're gonna work it out. I have my driver's license, my electric bill, my phone bill, and my homestead exemption. And your code board and the lawyer, this lawyer's lawyer, Ken Pop, referred to me as a cookie that crumble because they thought I lived in a warehouse. They fired the deputy that knew the cop was in my warehouse next to me, Nettles. Easy, the cop that was in my warehouse, had a bunch of problems down there in Cocoa Beach, man, because I didn't tell anybody he was in there. I want my code reduction hearing. You didn't give it to me because Kevin Nan, at this Presbyterian church down here, is a pedophile rumor, and I told you that first night. And what happened after that? His son was arrested for using his father's warehouse address next to my warehouses that he said I lived in. They arrested him. His son was already on suspended, plus he's now a rumor. That's his parents. I told you, he lied that night when he came into that code board meeting and said I lived in that warehouse. You should've let me defend myself after he said that about me. I'm sitting right there. The man shot me down, threw me under the bus, man. You wouldn't even let me defend myself, and you don't give me a code reduction hearing? You see the signs out here telling citizens why? Tell them why, Mister Green got filed because he trespassing holding a sign that Judge Foxer at the courthouse asked me to bring here. And the last thing Judge Foxer said to me when we were out there with them, he said, the court yard was got my signs. The last thing he said, he was barking it, if I have a sign that said I was railroaded, he may hold it. Now look what the signs have come to, how bad they've gotten. You want free speech and call me a cookie in a meeting when you think I'm homeless? I explained it to her for four months. Drivers had to let me fill a phone. Hey, I can't confirm if you live there. If you can't confirm I don't live there, you can't confirm, or you can't confirm I live, live there, you can't confirm I don't. You took three hundred dollars, my money, and you bought that. And why could you give someone that you think is homeless the maximum fine and not why you're doing it? Tell your citizens here, hey, here's this issue. Eight years? You gotta go back to the procedure where it started, Todd. And that was that first beating and code enforcement hearing. You gotta listen to defend yourself. Tell your citizens why they sign a
Thank you, Mister Benton. If I missed any cards today, please let me know. Um, I believe that concludes all the ones I've received, other than the ones that we decided to wait until item six. Seeing none, I don't believe our Sergeant of Arms has any more. With that, Deputy City Clerk, anyone from home who would like to participate in the public?
Uh, yes, Mister Campbell hasn't seen it up. Um, we'll go ahead and unmute him in a second.
Thank you.
Mister, I'm gonna give three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Mister Campbell.
Hi, how's everybody?
Good.
Good to see you all. I, um, I just wanna echo, uh, what Mister Hodge said about the roundabout, but I'd like to expand it. I know the city had, um, provided some names of condo association members and, and leaders of the city to FDOT so they could do small meetings. I'd like to know what the outcomes of those meetings were. I'd like to know, um, what the city's gonna do to take the pulse of the rest of the residents in Cape Canaveral about that roundabout. And I'd like to know, is the city gonna develop a position paper or take a position on whether or not we're in support of a roundabout in that location? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Campbell. I don't know if you heard earlier, I just wanna comment back that we are gonna, we've requested an update at the next council meeting, so thank you. Daniel, anymore? Come on. Seeing none, that closes the public participation portion of our meeting. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. This time, council, if there are any items that you'd like to remove, please let me know. Any remaining will pass through as a bundle.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to pull item two.
Thank you.
I'd like to remove item six, please.
Okay. Councilmember Davis or Raymond? Any others? And I assume that's it for you. Councilmember Willis and?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a remaining one, three, four, five, looking for a motion to adopt those.
I'll make a motion. We adopt consent agenda items one, three, four, and five.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Raymond. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis? Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
The motion to adopts consent agenda items one, three, four, and five passes five oh. Now move on to item number two, which was pulled, and that is to approve the city council's March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two strategic planning retreat in April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two workshop meeting minutes. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, I believe, or no, uh, Councilmember Willis, I believe you pulled this one?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to pull it for a comment, um, on page four of six of the minutes from the strategic planning retreat, uh, review of future goals and projects by department. There was mention of the fourteen million dollar projected cost for the, um, Florida D E P project that, uh, we were going to be required to have a deep injection well. And staff, to their credit, worked very hard, particularly, uh, Mister Ratliff and Mister Carlisle to get us an exemption from that fourteen million dollars. And I think it's commendable that they worked so hard to save the city that amount of money. And I think it speaks very highly of them and their willingness to, uh, to put in the extra effort to make that goal a for us. So I wanted to commend them for it and thank them. That's all I've got to say about it.
Thank you. Yes. And I concur. We appreciate you figuring out ways to, to make this work that frees up money to do other things. And that goes a long way, so thank you. All right, with that, if there's not any other comments on this item, looking for a motion to adopt it?
I make a motion to adopt item two.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt consent agenda item number two. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion to adopt the strategic planning retreat in the April two thousand and twenty-two workshop meeting minutes. It passes five oh. We now move on to consent agenda item number six, which was pulled by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum. Mayor Pro Tim? And just for everyone listening at home, this is to approve the removal of the specimen oak tree from the, uh, Canaveral City Park and approve mitigation plan at a ratio of one to one. I have got, um, some comment cards on this. Typically, just so everyone knows, uh, we'll make sure we don't have any questions from city staff first on this item. And then we can, maybe we'll discuss it. We'll go back out to the public and then we'll bring it back in. So Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Oh, yes, I wanted to pull this item because, um, and I had taken some pictures and I hope Dave can, or Daniel can put them up here. Um, I, the, the picture that's in here is an older picture. And these newer pictures, I had some questions. It looks like there's lights underneath the tree, the, the specimen tree that they're talking about. I wanted to know if there is going to be a walkway there where those lights are. And they talk about the tree being too close to the splash pad. Where does the splash pad actually begin? And this, is there gonna be a walkway there? That was my first question.
Gustavo, would you like to speak to that?
They're just, it's to make sure where the walkway is, so Gustavo is there?
Well, I didn't, they're, these look like lights to me. Are they lights, Gustavo?
No, they're, uh, holes for a shade structure that I don't know.
Okay. Okay, well, the, so will this, where exactly does the splash pad begin?
Uh, so the dry deck, which is the, uh, uh, first, most edge of the splash pad, is where you see those survey stakes.
Mm-hmm.
That'll be the edge of the splash pad. You see the survey stakes that are sticking up, the small pieces of wood there?
In between the
Yeah, they're kind of going along.
Well, there's survey sticks here and there's
Yeah, uh, they're, 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 uh, yeah, they're small survey stakes. So when you look at the first footer for the hole for the shade structure,
Mm-hmm.
if you could imagine like a curvilinear thing following that trajectory, and you can see the survey stakes following down.
Okay.
So it's basically about ten to twelve feet from the trunk of the tree.
Oh, yeah, and there's, uh, plumbing all over. Plumbing, the water.
Did you answer?
Would that be, okay, yeah. Uh, so would that, the plumbing there be for, it comes from the, that house thing?
It's a recirculating system, so yeah, it, it comes from there and goes to
Okay. Okay, so, and if, Daniel, if you could move it up another picture. There's another, this is the swell that was, that we needed for drainage. And that's what disturbed the roots of that tree? The swell?
That, I believe that was one of the things that hit it, yeah.
Okay. And then next to this, this tree is another tree. Is that one next on the cutting block or? Okay. Um, I just, I, I, you know, this tree was here and reading the, um, the statement from the, uh, the Mark, um, Michael Allen, it said that this tree's been there since the beginning. Oh, oh, yeah, this. Mm-hmm. And it was the swales, they stated the swales should be constructed around all impervious structures wherever possible. At that point, it appears that the open areas between the splash pad and the baseball field were converted into retention swales. So it doesn't say anything about plumbing there. Did they not know that the plumbing was gonna go there when?
Well, what, what he actually saying is that the oak tree at the splash pad should have been designated for removal prior to permanent removal. So he is admitting in his letter uh, that the tree should have been removed and that he missed. That's what he's saying in this, in that letter.
Mm-hmm.
So the issue of the plumbing came about as this splash pad versus putting it together. And he said, uh, here's what I'm seeing right off the bat. He said, that's me. Uh, this tree is gonna be a serious problem to you in years to come for two reasons. The first one being oak trees have a very aggressive root system. Uh, where you have, you know, anywhere where you see oak trees, sidewalks buckling, parking lots coming up, that's gonna happen on the splash pad. Once you have a splash pad there, it's gonna be very hard to repair. He said, the second issue you're gonna face with this tree here is the constant leaves. If you see those, that, all the pollen, uh, things that fall on trees that could create a nice soft bed, sometimes, he said, it's gonna be a nightmare for you. Uh, when it comes to maintenance and operation of this splash pad. Uh, then he brought, cause he's not an arborist, he said, if you look at that root system, it looks like your roots are a bit compromised already anyways. And so with a lot of rain and heavy winds, this tree may come down and damage whatever you put. Uh, so that's when we went to the city board and said, hey, what happened? What did we miss here? He goes, what did you miss? Uh, we didn't really come up with it. So that, that's how that evolved. We, we involved the city arborist to make his assessment of the situation. We got a day because it's under his purview of getting the tree removed and mitigated. So as soon as I was told that this thing could possibly harm the infrastructure that we're building, that kinda sounded a lot, to make sure that we were, uh, I was trying to protect, you know, the infrastructure that's being protected.
Right. And my other question is, and there's city code, um, you know, number one there says that we, you know, when, when you're designing something new, and we ask other people to do that, uh, property lines, whatever, will be shifted whenever possible to preserve trees. So we missed the mark on that then. I mean, the
Well, that, this site's very complicated because you have two, two types of operations. That's why the site is so tight. Uh, you know, the splash pad would have been ideal on the, um, on the south, uh, on the southwest side of the park. That would have been an ideal location.
Southwest.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Away from everything.
Right.
You know, but, uh, but the site is just so tight because the exploration takes up, uh, on the south side, there's pretty much takes up the whole area. All the way almost up to the flavor. They, they dug like almost, uh, vertical at the fence line almost to be able to, uh, put that exploration in on the old softball field, if you remember.
Right.
Uh, and then literally it's kind of the same thing. So we're just sandwiched in this small pocket of an area that you have to work. Um, originally, we changed the plans of a big hole thing because of that tree. So the original kind of design of splash that had that pump house somewhere else, and you had a big tank, that if you guys have been to the site, you saw that huge tank that stayed up. That was also a different play, but because we were trying to save trees, we had all that moved. And, uh, but there's only so much you can do with a very small footprint.
Mm-hmm. Um, the other thing is in the, um, from the arborist, he says, the tree has some root damage, but not enough to kill the tree. Is there any way, I mean, I understand the root system, and I did a little research, and it says the top eighteen inches of soil is where the oak roots go. I mean, I hate to see us, um, take down the tree if it's gonna be a hundred years from now when it gets to the splash pad. Um, I just, uh, you know, I hate to see us lose more trees, you know, and
Oh, I can give you a simple example of that. Um, I, when I came to the city nine years ago,
Hmm.
you guys had dirt at Menace and Tree Park three, Kelly. Uh, I think the second year I was here, we hired a company to put asphalt there. So in six to seven years, we're now having to fix fourteen to sixteen big areas that the oak tree has buckled the asphalt. So it isn't gonna be a hundred years. I saw it happen here in my very short stint.
Right. All right, that's all I have for now. I just thought maybe we could prune it back, but it's really the roots that you're worried about, not the tree as much, because the tree next to it is going to shed leaves and pollen and
Yeah, and so me, as the person that is gonna have to keep this splash pad open for everybody, or at least assist in doing that, it is, uh, the, the aggressive root system and the constant things that are gonna fall, as you can see, right on this splash pad.
Hmm.
Uh, if you could imagine your pool, anybody who has a pool here
Right.
and has any trees around their pool, the daily, um, you know, and, and so if you could imagine having an oak tree over your pool, but this is way different because now we're trying to keep public safety. So not only are we having to deal with, uh, with, uh, whatever comes from the tree, you're having to fight humans as well who's, you know, may not be as clean using the splash pad, et cetera. So
Right.
uh, it's, it's gonna be quite a task keeping this thing, the, the water quality as good as possible. So that, the splash pad installer just happened to bring me, you know, make me aware of that. And that's why we started the process.
Okay, when I was out there looking at it and the tree next to it, there's an orange mark on that tree, which makes me nervous, because that's usually how they mark trees that are gonna go. which makes me nervous because that's usually how they mark trees that it gotta go. That's there, right there, you can see it all the way on the...
No, that tree, no, that was never, that may have been from, I don't know what, some survey, I, I don't even know. But that, those trees on our original plan were never meant for the future.
Right, because you were, originally, you were supposed to have, we were gonna have seeding out there.
Are you seeding?
No, I mean, wasn't there bench seeding or?
Oh, there's some beautiful seedings, just sitting there waiting for the seed to stop.
Great. It means attached to the building.
Attached to the building?
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, we, yeah, I was like, whoo.
Back in there.
I was back when we had one.
All right, thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Gustavo, councilman. Looking at this, this photo that we're, we have in front of us, what is going to be the accessibility to get to that tree if we left it there?
If we left it there?
Yeah. Are we, are we going to be blocked? If, if we were to leave it there and in three years we find out, uh, no, it's gotta go? Can we, we won't be able to get to it, will we?
You, you may be able to get to it without boom, uh, from the backside, maybe from the softball side? I mean, from the baseball side, you'd have to rent a big lift and, you know. With enough money, he can do anything he wants.
Right, but of course, all right, all right. Just looking at this photo, you see more stakes, and I wondered how much, how much more development, concrete is going in there?
It's not accessible, uh, very easily.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Councilmember Raymond or David, any questions for staff?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just wanna add that I was very saddened to see this happen. And matter of fact, staff wanted to bring this to the last council meeting. I wasn't satisfied that we hadn't gotten to the bottom of it. Why this, why we got to this eleventh hour and we're just now discovering this? So it took quite a bit of staff research to uncover all that you have here, but this is the entire picture. I was saddened by this because we went through extraordinary efforts to preserve trees. Um, Ginny Derska even helped with that. We, we made so many steps, and we made such great progress with this community on preserving trees at this park. And I remember making the statement, there are no other trees coming down from this park. So that saddened me as well. So when, when this happened to any tree, let alone a specimen tree, I feel I've let the city down. I feel that it's, I'll, I'll take the responsibility for this. It ultimately ends with me. We tried to save this. We did everything we could. As Gustavo said, we moved a huge underground tank to preserve this tree. We relocated the, uh, the pump building to save this tree. And then at this late hour, the splash pad contractor comes to us and says, this is impossible to live with this tree here because it's gonna impact the splash pad. And then when we asked the city arborist to go out, and he tells us that the tree roots have been damaged. And we find out, well, why were the tree roots damaged? Well, there was a, there was additional retention put in early without evidently not comparing it to the tree plan. And at that point, I'm hearing from my team, yes, we should have had this tree scheduled for removal, for removal from the beginning. So I was angry about that. That's not the kind of service that we expect from our contractors. And I'm gonna take responsibility for this, but this saddens me, but unfortunately, we have to do it.
Thank you, Ted. My comments are, you know, I don't know anyone that when you ask, hey, do you wanna remove a tree that people are excited about, it usually comes in scenarios where it's a legitimate danger, um, or it's an invasive species or something. But yeah, when we're talking about, um, oak trees, this tree is a healthy tree. It's my, I go out to that softball field or baseball field and treat it as a softball field uh, with my daughter, and it's dead center. It's quite the, the centerpiece from the Little League field view. It's, yesterday, uh, went over there and kind of looked around. I think it might be, if not the, the oldest tree on the entire, uh, property. The picture, I don't think, does it justice to show the girth and diameter of it, but it's a mature tree, it's a healthy tree. And it's center of the property, centerpiece. Again, if a tree needs to be removed for, for legitimate reasons, I try to figure out every way we can. I'm a big believer in private property rights. I think people want to naturally preserve trees. Typically, they'll put in more than they take out. Trees are, you don't have to twist people's arms. But under the circumstances that we're here today, the, I don't know, I hope that the, the lesson learned was that whenever, who should have called it when? That I can't imagine that it was the splash pad. I mean, if I'm installing a splash pad and I need to make that, you know, my job is to do that. I'm sure he didn't wanna end his job, you know? I mean, he, he, he wanted to do that, but I don't think that should have fallen on his shoulders. I think it was somebody along the way, the engineering, and I appreciate, because I share the same thing, is, as I'm mayor, this happens, this is being proposed on my watch, and I take responsibility too. But that point to where they're engineering, you've got this motive to ensure the splash pad can go up. So there's this motive to protect the splash pad. Then there's this motive to obviously protect the trees. And at some point, the splash pad won that battle. And it was that moment when the, the chainsaw or whatever was going down into this perfectly healthy tree and ground those roots up right down the line, and that's the part where I'm going, where was the, you know, knowing that tree's standing there? I mean, I garden, I work around my roots, and so when those were coming across, that's been that way, I think, for a long time. And I just don't know why that sat there for so long, or why there wasn't hesitation before they said, are you sure you want me to do this? And so now it sits there. Of course, it's damaged, but the good news from the arborist is says, yeah, it's hurting, but due to its maturity and probably its, its bandwidth and roots, I think it, it's, it can make it, it has a chance. And so my, my hope is that we, we save the tree. Um, I don't think it's a valid argument to say that just because the, the leaves are going to cause a problem, that that's a reason we should remove it. I understand the pain, but just imagine this. A residential homeowner wants to build a pool. There's a big oak tree in the back. He builds this pool, and then he comes back into city hall and he says, hey, guys, just built my pool. This tree's been here, it's dumping leaves in our pool. I don't think any of us here today would say, get that tree out, you need to have a clear pool. I think every single day, that person's got a job. I lived in a house with that pool. I was always digging leaves out. Some people can screen their print, screen it in or whatnot. But to me, this is the thing that, that we don't know is to, the leaves, I just, I take that off. And I think we're gonna have to figure out a way to maintain that. And it's not worth taking the most mature, beautiful tree on this property out. And yes, if problems do get to a point, um, that aren't maintenance-related, we can address that then. Shrinking the size of the splash pad is maybe something else. Putting up some sort of buffer, but exploring, you know, maybe there's a shade that we can put up, it's angled or facing that can help buffer some of the leaves. But I don't think out of principle, we would let a property owner remove a tree because leaves were clogging up their filter. And for the same reasons here, I couldn't allow us to do something we wouldn't let them do. Um, and as far as the roots go, uh, if there is a steel or a, a very dense piece of material or something that can be, um, installed, subgrade, underground to put a block, an underground wall essentially, to allow those roots to come up to it and then to turn, that would be worth the investment, um, to, opposed to taking this out. And I would be willing to say, let's see what happens, and if we start to see that there's problems, we can get to this tree from the center league field. People can get back there, remove, prune, trim. But the last thing we wanna do is take it out over, um, potentially something that we might be able to mitigate. And so I think we try to save it, and we make it a success story, and we explore all alternatives before we remove this tree. Thank you. Any other council members wanna talk? This time I've got public participation. Ms. Morgan Hamley. Hamby, excuse me.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, this conversation is really informative. And I called back yesterday, and he was able to explain to me, a lot of folks had said that there was a problem, and it wasn't originally supposed to be removed, but really are. So these pictures are very helpful in this conversation. I guess what come to my mind is, why were shade structures planted underneath the tree, which is already clearly providing shade? In my mind, this is at best a careless mistake, but at worst, this was meditated, maybe? I'm not sure, but it seems like we are constantly advocating for our trees. And it doesn't seem like we're sharing a common goal when it comes to public spaces. For me, as someone who's gonna frequent the park, as a mom with two kids, that is what I'm going to. Full shade, out of the sun, in natural shade, kids don't mind if they're leaving water. Lovely, love it. That's not an issue for the children's perspective. And I am just gonna be really sad if we don't try to save it. I appreciate what you're saying. Midwest, um, I really liked before we just eradicated to actually give some attempts to try to save it. This would send a greater message to our public that we care about our environment. We care about our public spaces, and we are willing to invest. Talk is easy. Um, if we could actually show some effort financially to intent to save the tree, I think that would actually speak volumes. And if we lose this, um, I would propose, if you are going to mitigate it by planting other trees, trees that would support our biodiversity, um, oak trees are great, palm trees are not. We love palms, there are palms everywhere in our community, and the oak trees are constantly being taken down. And so if we could actually be moving in that direction, plants and, and plant intentionally, that I think is what we at the community are really looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Morgan. Mr. Brad Prevell. Brad, how are you doing?
I'm doing good, doing well. How about Oklahoma? I'm in the World Series. I'm here to talk about the trees. As many of you may remember, I was part of a concerned group of citizens to save the tree on the east side of City Park. Listening to what everyone is saying this evening so far, I appreciate your thoughts, I appreciate your comments on everything. And so we know accidents happen. You don't know what you don't know about where we put the splash pad. But the big thing is, it's not about one tree. Okay, one tree. But then there's another tree, and then there's another tree. You have to understand that the citizens of Cape Canaveral really care about their trees. As a matter of fact, there's one family in the presidential streets who went out of their way, they bought a lot next to their house to save a hundred-year-old tree because it was gonna be cut down to put a new house. You need to know that. In addition, when we found out that they were gonna cut down, I call legacy oak trees, you call them specimens. That specimen is a thirty-year plus or minus tree. When you were gonna cut down those trees around City Park, in a couple of hours, we were able to secure approximately one hundred signatures on a petition to prevent the cutting of those trees. That's eight percent, you all got about fifteen hundred votes in the last election, each individual. That's about eight percent. Imagine if we had a conservative effort, how many votes we would have gotten? It would have been twenty percent of your vote. Trees are important. As Gustavo said, or someone said, who did the planning of where to put this splash pad when this tree's been there before? Okay, you can't look in the past now and say, oh, we should have known better. I hope our current elected officials now learn that where you're gonna put something, you gotta look to the future. I appreciate what the mayor just said about, can we do a roof lock system, can we keep the tree? I totally get that, okay? But sometimes we make errors, and then we have to make a decision. Decisions are hard, but the right decision is the hard decision. Because it was a hard decision to drop a new door box in four or two. Was it a right decision? Yes. So we have to make a hard decision. If the decision is to possibly have to cut down these two trees, say thirty seconds, why don't we line the outfield with crepe murals, the outfield fence, all with crepe murals? Wouldn't that be beautiful in springtime when the Little League field opens up? They grow well, they offer shade. It's an alternative than cabbage palms.
Mr. Prevell, that was actually your three, but if you could wrap it up, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to. And really, that's what I got. I mean, you know, you don't know what you don't know. You make mistakes, but let's kind of fix it, you know? We all know oak trees shade.
Thank you. Ms. Ginny Derska.
Hello, Ms., I'm Ginny Derska, seventy-eight-year-old, Ridgefield Avenue, part-time resident. And when I saw the specimen tree scheduled for removal, that was my trigger. Here I am with the trees. And I appreciate so much the conversation that you've been having. David called me and informed me about the tree. And I, I just have some experience with trees, especially oak trees. I was a caregiver for huge, beyond specimen of trees for about thirty years. And they are very resilient. And my hope for the tree is that we can keep it alive, trim it. They can tolerate a lot of trimming, and when I look at this one, it looks like you could trim perhaps even the main portion that's in the direction of the splash pad to curb some of the leaves, would also reduce the shade, which would not be good. But if that would help it to survive, since the roots have been trimmed, that would be a good thing. I would just love to see it saved, see what happens for a few years, and then decide if it needs to be removed. Give it a chance, is what I wanted to say, so. Thank you very much. The building is pretty spectacular there, and, uh, I have grandchildren coming in the future, and I am very much looking forward to joining the splash pad and hilarious with it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have for public comment cards for here physically present. If you, if I overlooked it or missed, please just let, let us know. Daniel, any comments from home? Seeing none? Go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to this council. I would move that we, I mean, this isn't my motion. I would like to make a proposal that we finish the project, keep the tree, work with our arborist, come up with some... The, the idea of the shield was actually, um, city manager. We were just talking about stuff, and overall, he felt like he did today, like, hey, this is gonna be a problem. But I'm not saying he was for, for that. I thought it was something. I don't have all the answers, but I know that we should try to explore them. And if it means delaying the, the splash pad, which I hope it doesn't, for another week or two, it'd be worth it. I don't know whether it's holding up, but that's, um, you can't get forty years back. And I feel like there's a little bit of faith here. Maybe nature does something we've never seen it do, but it'd be worth it here to give it a shot, so.
Mayor?
That's my proposal. Yes, sir.
Uh, just a couple of points I wanna bring out. If the decision is to, to remove this tree, mitigate it, staff proposes six trees. And the way our code referred to it is equal shade potential. Uh, and the reason we, the code refers to it that way is obviously a palm tree doesn't give the same shade that an oak tree does. So what we would propose in this case is six trees mitigated of equal shade potential within the city park system. Not necessarily at this park, because this is already pretty tight, but potentially at other parks. And, and to clarify, um, the idea... And to clarify, the idea that you and I talked about was an idea of potential root blocking shield underground. And I don't even know if that's a thing, Tim. Maybe you can speak to that and you can also speak to, if the council wants, about the hazard rating, which I think I'm a little not clear on what hazard rating means on your form there. So maybe Mayor, if you like.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Hey, Tim, for those of you who don't know, Tim's been with us for a long time and we benefit from his expertise as an arborist for the city. And he provided a report for us, which is very valuable. So, Tim?
Yeah, the hazard rating basically takes on, the main part is the size of the tree. See, if you see the per value percentage, it's a low number. And of course, part of rating is because it's constant use for these people there. So that's why those two numbers are that high. And, you know, I'm the first one, it's one of the same trees, everybody knows that. You know, I planted a couple of those trees on that park. There was probably that one and three other ones over there. The one over on the north side, near the dugout, and then on the east side, the two big ones. And other than that, we planted around it, tried to match to know what was going on there. And if you guys want to try to save it, we can, you know, we'll have to excavate a lot of the dirt around it, so we can do proper pruning. So, when a tree goes through that kind of stress, their reserves are in the root system. So when they're under that kind of stress, they rely on it. So, those pictures really don't do it justice, some of the ones over my home. It was pretty severe, you know, the actual structural roots. The byrostruce roots were probably ninety percent gone. They're only right around the trunk because they've excavated so much around the tree. And, you know, trees are on a different timescale than humans, of course, you know, they, that's why I said the tree might survive and could. It's not showing no signs of decline now, you know, but it could down the road. I wouldn't really try pruning the canopy right now because just the stress that's happened to the roots. And right now, we're in the middle of like summertime, so, or even excluding root prep. Any other questions or something that I could answer?
Tim, what's the likelihood of this tree remaining structurally sound in a strong wind environment?
You know, Todd, that's kind of hard for me to say without digging deeper, you know, because we've seen it's probably thirty inches they dug out, probably around it. So there probably is more structural roots down lower, but they're not like a pine tree or another conifer where they go down straight. You know, they're pretty broad rooted too. You know, they're not as shallow as ficus trees and other trees, but, you know, there's, I'm sure there's other root systems below it.
Thank you.
You know? And as far as like the root barrier, you could probably do that. At that, right now, the way it is, I would probably have it excavated and probably conquered. Be your best to, you know? Not so much as anything that's plastic or perivious or anything like that, because they'll go through it or they'll go under. So if you go down deep enough, we might be able to deter it, but the structural roots won't grow back. Those real big ones, they'll just callus over and that'll be, that'll be it for them. It's kind of like the big branches, when you cut them off, they don't really come back.
Can I ask, I have known nothing about trees, I'll be the first one to say. We're talking about the roots possibly damaging the splash pad. How fast are roots, I mean, how, what timeframe are we looking at? How fast do the roots grow that, you know?
Well, the roots are probably all under there already.
Okay.
And so like I said, there's, there's water system pipes that they're around. They're all over the place. Well, you can't see it now because they're buried, you know? And I wasn't involved in any of that, so we didn't see that until when they called me to go out and see it, because I don't, you know, I have nothing to do with the construction part of that. When I came out there and seen how close it was, you know, it's pretty close to those sage structures and those footers that they put, they went down, I don't even know the top of my head, but I'm sure at least four or five feet in the ground.
Tim, is it true that the roots spread out the same spread that the canopy spreads out as well?
Yeah, sometimes greater.
So, this tree has a forty-five-foot spread canopy? So, the roots would have a forty-five-foot spread? And in your estimation, seeing the splash pad, they're already under the splash pad?
I mean, you understand that retention pond that got excavated, the other side got excavated, and the other side where the fence is, they were putting a temporary water line through there. And they excavated a ton through there too. And they did it with a mini excavator. They didn't use their saws or nothing, so the roots are just ripped and splintered. So that's why if you want, we need to do that and I'll have to take the dirt away as best I can, would probably pressurize water and excavate it that way. And then I can probably use some pruning guts and then we'll go from there. If that's what you choose to do.
I'm just wondering, did you say the roots are already under the splash pad?
I'm sure they are.
Will that break the splash pad eventually?
Well, I'm not an engineer, but.
Okay, but I mean, what I don't get is the roots are already under there. Is that correct?
Yeah, and it's kind of hard, if you guys actually, like you said, you've been out there and you walk and see the tree at the proximity to where it's at. I mean, it's right on top of it.
So if we take the tree out and there's roots under there already, will they sprout another tree or are they, they'll just die?
You'd have to stump grind it, so if you couldn't just do a flush pad and walk away, you'd have to have it sun browned.
Let me ask this question, if we were to do some sort of barrier, like you said, concrete into the ground, we're going to be cutting through all those roots?
Well, I think a big majority of them are cut.
Even towards the splash pad?
And the only ones that are going to be that deep will be the structural ones, the byrostruce roots, I'm going to go with that.
So trying to put a barrier there is going to further compromise it?
Yeah, it's hard to say, like I said, until we get out there and like dig it up, basically. And I would have to be there probably to like watch whoever does it. I mean, I don't know if we could do that in-house as far as like forming it all up and stuff?
If we do try to save it, what would be the cost? You're talking about taking the dirt and doing, what would be the cost of the city of doing all that?
Well, that would basically be my labor, I guess, you know, as far as all the root pruning. The barrier part, I mean, it would be something like this wooden wall, but it would be kind of concrete. They do make other barriers, we could reach out and find other things, you know, maybe? But there could be, you know, metal root barriers and there's thick plastic ones. You know, I've never really actually had to do it, but there is products out.
Could we, if we put a barrier around that tree, could it extend to the other one so we don't have the same problems with that tree next to it?
The other one that's in the retention pond, I don't think, no, that's pretty far away. Yeah. And of course, it's a little smaller, you know? But I mean, it's going to keep growing.
Right. Well, I mean, if we contain the roots now, they won't make.
You might, we might look into it maybe toward their building itself, you know? Because otherwise, it's just, you know, the baseball field and the retention pond.
Right.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's good to know that you've heard of things that it's possible and it makes sense. I mean, that if those roots, right now, because it's under so much stressed, stress, the only benefit of pruning the top would be to eliminate the leaf problem, but you say, don't do that right now. Let it, let them callus over.
I would wait till the wind, you know, till the weather changes.
Let it.
I wouldn't try doing it right now.
Do it, do it in phases and if there are, you know, other areas without digging, you wouldn't know, that we need to put a block, we're focusing on that first and then the last thing you do is prune it, so you can get a nice even edge up there. I think it's worth it, I mean, even if it does further compromise it, say they've got to sever some roots, but I think the majority of the damage, at least on that side, has been done. And those roots will try to run up against it and, but they're going to go hopefully the other way and back into center field. I think it's worth a shot. And at any point where we're halfway down the stretch and it's like, oh, it's going now, I mean, at least we tried and we did the best we could, but that's, that's my take.
Todd, I don't know if you have an answer to this, and I know you can't give an exact, and we don't know i- if we keep the tree, when it, the roots would go under and possibly damage the splash pad. Is there any estimate like how much it's going to cost the city? I know further down, you know, years from now, it's going to be more expensive than now, but how much is it going to cost us every time we have to fix this? Because we could fix it and then a year later, the roots damage it again. So, how, what are we looking at cost-wise every time?
It is hard to answer. And I hate to say this, but I think we have to speak the obvious, the cheapest thing is to remove the tree.
Right.
That's obvious. But there's a, there's a cost, there's an intrinsic cost to that that we're trying to mitigate here as well. So, yeah, there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know what's going to happen with the filtration system with the leaves and the constant maintenance and if maybe there's a cost to help block that as well. We don't know that either. But the cheapest thing would be to remove it and mitigate it, unfortunately.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think the, one more comment. The cheapest scenario would be that we put this block up and then that doesn't happen as it could, and I agree, but the barrier is a success. It stops the fear of it cracking and then we never have to do that again. But in the event it does happen, I think at that point, if it happens once, that's a better time to come back and go, all right, we were concerned, it's a few thousand bucks to fix this, five, ten, I have no idea either how much it's going to cost, but now is the time to make a decision on removing the tree. But yes.
The splash pad costs the city five hundred thousand dollars. So, if the city is willing to preserve a tree, that may, you may incur consistently problems, ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars over the next ten, fifteen years, if that's what it would be. And that's what the city needs to also think about, because we are putting five hundred thousand dollars into the splash pad. And the repairs are not going to get any cheaper. It's not going to get any cheaper to do anything in the future. Everything costs, you know, at least twelve and a half to eighteen percent more, and that's just in the upcoming year. So, it's just something to think about.
May I ask a question of the city manager? Of the six shade trees, how large would each one of them be?
The, there's a city code mandated minimum requirement of one and a half inches, Gustavo, what did you have planned for that?
It's a minimum.
Minimum? Diameter?
But not a maximum.
No, we didn't plant any hundred gallon trees before, you know, with a six, eight-inch caliber. We haven't done very often, but we have. Most of the time, they're sixty gallon, you know, probably three inch.
If you look at the pendolias that we're already planting along the bedway, those are beautiful trees, they're not twigs. So you just got to look at what's been planted already to show you the example of the standard that we're holding.
I have a question. Tim, how do you, how do you determine how old a tree is? I looked it up on YouTube, but I, you know.
Yeah, it's pretty hard, it really is, without, you know, doing increments and stuff like that. I can tell because I've been in green industry since nineteen eighty-nine. You know, I've been their arborist since ninety-six. And I kind of know, you know, like I said, I planted a big majority of these trees on the right ways back when the initiative was on Tree City, we wanted our canopy. So, you know, it's kind of different. Out here on the coastal areas, they might grow a little slower because the conditions are harsher. If you go inland, maybe like Orlando and stuff, the same tree might be bigger. You know, it's the same thing with humans, you know, it's like genetics and what kind of, you know, do they have irrigation? A lot of it has to do with that too, because most of our trees have irrigations at all of our parks, but the ones that were in the right of way, we had a water regimen on them. It was pretty, pretty intensive, you know, it was, we had a water wagon, they had to be watered, you know, three times a week. And we did it for multiple months to get them established. And that's pretty much the way they all were in Manity Park too, because the irrigation's only around the building itself, so.
Right. And you know, and I've heard that oaks that are that big or bigger on the beach are resilient because it, it's tougher for them to grow in the sand.
Yeah, the salt there is pretty harsh on, they can burn and it starts changing soil composition too after a while because of the salt build-up. So that kind of makes it harder on the tree itself too as far as, you know, nutrient uptake. I mean, like I planted the ones right there in Capeview inside the playground, the thing with the baton, and they're only, you know, those big, but they're twenty-five years old.
Right. And do you know how many trees we took out? Because there was a long line of oak trees right there.
Yeah, there was a few, there was an old cedar that was there, it had a lot of small damage to it. There was a pine tree there that was there that I didn't plant. But the other ones, most of the palms were planted and become another project. Only the real tall ones are around like a little bit of the field, the ones that are like, you know, thirty or forty feet tall, those have been there. But all of those work as the city, you know.
Okay, thank you.
What, what would be the, the cost of those six trees?
I believe, Gustavo, the estimated cost is eight hundred dollars for removal and replacement.
No, sir. No, as far as the, the purchase of the trees, I, I think that's still to be decided as far as the kind of tree and, you know, because we're always trying to bring diversity to specifically, we're thinking about Manity and the bedways to, you know, so we're thinking about a bunch of different trees, some cypress we're talking about, and some gumbo limbos, and just a bunch of really nice trees to.
What does the eight hundred dollars represent?
I believe the eight hundred dollars represented removal and we were still dealing with, you know, how big a tree we're going to get and the kind of trees we're going to.
So it doesn't include mitigation costs?
Not a hundred percent, no.
Well, my thought is this, if, if we looked at the cost of trying to save that tree, not knowing that we can, rather than spending that on the unknown, we put it forward towards larger replacement trees. I mean, we, we could possibly lose that tree no matter what we do. Right? Am I correct?
Yeah, I'm sure the shakeup product can get it off. Same, like I said, they react differently, but I'm sure, you know, it got a lot of lifespan chopped off of it.
So my, my question is, should we consider what it would cost, we would have to put into it to try to save the tree, knowing that we may not be successful with it? Take that by larger trees as replacements?
I think knowing the cost of what it would take is it, that's, I never thought that doing that at any cost was a good idea. I would think that staff would come back and let us know from his judgment if it would be worth it or not. And yeah, applying it to the new trees is important too, but to have the, this mature tree replicated, you know, if it's going to be a thousand bucks to save this tree and it's a thousand dollars to plant new ones, to me, it's better to plant the thousand dollars to save the tree. Frankly, do both in my opinion, but it's a good investment. Either way, knowing the cost would be a good next step for me. It, I think.
I'm not worried about the cost. I'm, I'm more concerned about the safety issue. I just want to make sure that this tree is safe the way it is right now, because I think safety has to be our number one priority.
If we go forward and try and save it, then I'll do the excavation.
If it's safe, I think it should be safe too. I have to weigh in on the safety issue though, just to be sure, just to be one hundred percent sure. But why not? I mean, if we could, you know, plant more trees, we should always be planting more trees, always. And, you know, save it if we can.
So, can I make a motion that we let this, let them investigate what it would take to save the tree, how much it would cost, and bring it back to us? Is there, I mean, I don't want to hold up the splash pad, but is there a way we could get it and, you know, make, make a better decision? I, I would like to save the tree. I mean, I think we've cut down enough trees in the park. I would like to save the tree and I, you know, I, I need a tree cut down in my yard and they told me it was twelve hundred dollars. I would like to save the tree and I, I, you know, I, I need a tree cut down in my yard and they told me it was $1,200. I don't know, that's a huge tree. How it's $800? Yeah.
Yeah, that's another thing that that costs.
Um, I just think that we.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
I just want to clarify that we got a motion to, to put together an effort to figure out a way to save it.
Right.
Waiting till the next council meeting. I mean, I know we say we don't want to delay, but we actually, we think it's worth delaying. I just want to understand what that means, delay. Is that going to be a major issue if we bring this one back?
Gustavo, what are the impacts on construction if we, uh, delay this decision for another month?
And as you're walking up, just think about, he comes up with a solution in a week or two and we actually, I'm not saying we wait 30 days and we make a decision. You might say, hey, 500 bucks, we put the barrier up and we're rolling, you know.
The only difference is how much if, uh, if it's decided to remove the tree, how much that's going to cost? Because the splash pad's moving forward, there's no slowing down the splash pad. Uh, it's been delayed enough and any semblance of progress we can get there is going to happen. It's just if, uh, council at some point decides to remove the tree, then it, it'll just cost more equipment to get Leland or whoever's going to do it, you know, to figure out how to get in there and get it out. That's just, you know, with the, the progress of the splash pad. So we won't delay the splash pad anymore.
The, the motion, they're moving forward the splash pad is to explore alternatives and, and try to pursue them. And I would say whatever the city manager does, let him go. And if any of this council has a problem with it, we have the ability to call a meeting and to try to, 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 to express our views. But that way he can just go forward with it.
Yes, let's, let's call a question.
So I got a motion by Mayor Pro, go ahead.
To clarify the motion, um, who made the motion, I'm sorry. Can you restate the motion?
I just made a motion that we do everything we can to figure out how to save it. Um, you know, let them dig around, put a barrier, um, whatever we can. And, you know, figure out the cost, how much, you know, like Tim was saying, he really doesn't know the damage until he gets in there a little more.
So would that be to provide an update at the next council meeting?
Well, I think, and if, I mean, it's your decision, your city manager. I mean, is that what you, you're?
I would say try to save it, implement the solution if you think it's a good idea to do it. And use the resources you have available to do it. If you have a problem with it, you can communicate that to council and you say, I can't save it. It's too expensive and, and I feel strongly about this. We can, that's the decision you make and if any of us want to call a meeting, we can.
So it'll be.
You make a decision.
Okay.
I think we have at least the majority that want to try to save it.
So understand that if the decision is it's still best to remove it, that is a council decision to make and schedule that meeting.
Yes. Do everything possible to save the tree.
Is my only request, like what you want, what your, what your decision is and.
I understand.
Yep. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Can, and all the questions, we do the.
So we got a motion to, um, explore, city manager is authorized to, to make a decision on the tree with the goal to try to save it and/or if not remove it, he'll communicate why and, um, be able to move forward. So, um, got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to save the tree and a second by Councilmember Raymond. Any other discussion?
The motion is to save the tree or to explore what it's going to take to save the tree.
The motion I heard was save the tree. Well, I added to just explaining the details of that, but it's your motion.
Well, I think what Don is saying is explore the way to save the tree. If it turns out that it's going to.
The effects, the cost.
Right.
Everything associated with what it's going to take to save the tree.
Okay. Okay. I'll restate the motion.
Thank you.
A motion is to save the tree and to explore alternatives to, to make that happen. So, uh, it's just a little weird because we've given the city manager the ability to not save the tree too, if, if, if that's the thing. So I think the.
It doesn't have to come back to us to make the final decision.
Motion is to explore all alternatives to save the tree and allow the city manager to make a decision. Whether he saves it or removes it.
Yes, that's good.
That's the motion that I, I'm sensing.
Yeah.
Can you read that back? Can we ask the city?
Motion is to ex- explore alternatives to save the tree. But in the event you determine it's not worth it, you have the ability to remove the tree.
Without counsel.
Communicate to us. And I would say give us reasonable notice.
Got you.
Okay.
We talk all the time anyways, so that's not a problem.
Yeah. Is that a?
Yep.
There's a lot in there.
There's a lot.
Because we're trying to give him the ability to move quickly, not stand in his way and have to bring it back to us.
As necessary.
Yeah.
Penny?
You good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, a second by Councilmember Raymond. Any other discussion?
Oh, you had a hand.
Yes. You have a comment, Brad? Okay, you have to come up here because there's people at home that might be listening. I'm happy to.
You know, guys, I think you guys will do the right decision, whether it's to save the tree or you're going to have to unfortunately remove the tree. However, I'd like, I don't know how to, how you can do this, but the six trees that you were talking about, I'd like the six trees to be in City Park where I live, not at Manatee Park. I mean, you're taking down a tree that has a nice canopy, you're going to put six new trees somewhere else? Honestly, not fair. I live in Hawaii there. Help me there, help you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also like Brad's idea about planting along the fence out there with maybe some other shrub trees or something as a part of a mitigation effort. I know it's not trees for trees, but it's beautification. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Gustavo?
By the way, the landscape plan at Canaveral City Park is not done yet. So there are more trees coming. Uh, you see that huge mountain dirt and that whole pathway still, that's right. That whole pathway still needs to be fixed. That's all going to be landscaped with trees as well. So there's a, there's a whole landscape plan that hasn't been able to be implemented because of that other construction that's still coming in that area. Just want to let you know that it's not done yet.
Harland, would you like to say something? Thank you.
Yes, Harland Law, you know, sir, the one like that. Is there any way that the designer of the splash pad could be held responsible for not having looked into this and being a major problem with the, the tree roots?
We.
The city manager and I'll just address this. We talked about, you know, getting back to the contracts, who's liable, errors and omissions or whatnot. I'll let city manager reply to you.
Yeah, and I think because this is a construction management at risk contract, the argument would be why wouldn't this fall under the contingency in the guaranteed maximum price? And that'd be a hard argument to overcome. The type of contract that we're in, we're partners with the contractors and the designers. It's not a traditional arrangement.
Okay.
So it would, it would, in other words, we ended up paying for it anyways.
I understand, it's just that I was thinking that way back when this was getting started, why wasn't these, why weren't these tree roots addressed at that particular time?
That's what I got mad about.
That's it.
That's exactly it.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Seeing none, so we got a motion and a second on the floor. We're not good, we're ready to call the roll, call the vote, thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0 for consented into item number six. We're at 7:23 PM. Everyone doing okay? We are now moving on to the public hearings portion of the meeting. And we are at ordinance number 05-2022, providing a referendum in ballot language for the November 8, 2022 general election. Ask our city attorney to help us out here. Please.
This is the second and final reading of ordinance 05-2022. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, providing for a referendum in ballot language for the November 8th, 2022 general election or an election scheduled thereafter, proposing to amend section 2.02 of the city charter regarding eligibility to serve on the city council to provide that city council members must be domiciled within the city of Cape Canaveral at least one year immediately prior to qualifying. It must remain domiciled within the city of Cape Canaveral during their term in office or forfeit their office, providing for notice of the Cape Canaveral Charter referendum question, providing for coordination with the supervisor of elections, providing for administration of the referendum by the city clerk and city manager, providing for severability in an effective date, as I indicated, it's the second and final reading. Um, the, the referendum question proposes an amendment to the city charter regarding qualification um, of individuals to, uh, run for city council. Uh, currently the city, as you know, the city charter does not establish a residency requirement as a qualification requirement to run for office. So this, this ordinance, uh, or this referendum proposes a, a slight amendment to the charter. The question that would actually be proposed to the voters, uh, the title would be amending eligibility requirements for council members prior to qualifying and during term in office. Uh, should, it, it states, shall section 2.02 subparagraf B of the city charter regarding eligibility to serve on the city council be amended to require that city council members must be domiciled within the city of Cape Canaveral at least one year immediately prior to qualifying. It must remain domiciled within the city of Cape Canaveral during their term in office or forfeit their office. The other side, uh, note to, to this referendum question, uh, the city council, um, discussed the, the legal distinctions between domicile and residency. Um, currently there's a residency requirement in the charter. Domicile, um, is a little bit more stringent requirement in that, uh, domicile is, is generally a person's permanent abiding place. A person can have multiple residences, but there's only one domicile that a person can have, um, to declare a permanent abiding place. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have regarding this ordinance. Mayor.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, anything you want to add to this?
No, I think that was a good summation. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Any discussion, we're going to go to public hearing? Okay? All right. This is a public hearing item. If anyone from the public would like to come up and speak, you can. I have any cards on this? Looking at our deputy city clerk, looks like we're going to go out online. We've got somebody.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Campbell, I'm going to go ahead and, Mr. Campbell, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, um, I just want some clarification on this. At the last election, the city put out packages to candidates, potential candidates, uh, that required a residency of one year when in fact it did not exist. And I brought that up. Um, does this solve that problem?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. City attorney, you understand this question? It's, um, it's, I can give it a shot to try to answer. I think it's important, but.
Yeah, well, I don't know if you, you know, solve the problem. I mean, I think there was a, um, clerical error on qualification papers, um, that was fixed. Um, this ordinance, i- if the referendum, if the referendum passes, would, um, and then impose a one-year domicile requirement, which would be consistent with, um, qualification papers that were initially submitted out in the public during the last election. So I guess that would solve the problem, um, by in- incorporating a provision, a one-year residency or domicile requirement in the city charter.
Mr. Campbell, did you hear that response? I think the short answer is essentially yes, maybe even a little bit more stringent with domicile opposed to residency. So.
Yeah, I think, I think what I heard is that the, the way that package was put out last year, uh, would be just fine after this is passed.
That's what I heard as well.
Yeah, with a slight tweak that it would be domicile.
Yep.
Not, not just plain residency.
Hmm. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Campbell? Good?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you know any other public comments or hands raised? Seeing none? Okay. This time we'll go ahead and close public participation, public hearing item and bring it back to council. If we're ready, no other discussion, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion when you adopt ordinance number 05-2022, the second reading.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, a second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance number 05-2022 as written. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right. Motion passes 5-0. We're now moving on, uh, public hearing item number eight. Says based on the May 5th, 2022 of Cape Canaveral wastewater revenue sufficiency analysis completed by Ref. Ellis, a financial consultant, Inc., the following action is recommended by the city staff. This is a resolution 2022-13 reviving the city sanitary sewer service fee schedule in accordance with Article 3 of Chapter 8, 78 of the city code for fiscal years 2022 and 2023 through 2026, 2027. Um, essentially what we're doing here is changing the fees, uh, or proposing to change the fees um, by resolution for, um, appendix B in the schedule of fees for our sanitary sewer services. So wastewater, things like that. Um, city manager, anything you want to add to this?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is something the city typically does every five years. We did not do it. We did, this is now the sixth year. Last year was because of COVID, we decided to hold off on this because nobody needed any new fee increases. But here we are, we need to do this every five years. Uh, we've had Ref. Tellus work for us before. I believe we have a Ref. Tellus representative, Joe Williams, here tonight, ready to speak and answer questions in the audience, Mayor. Uh, and what this does is it takes it a, an overall holistic look at the, um, water, wastewater treatment facility process, the collection and the distribute, uh, all the lift stations, everything it takes to run a sewer plant, sewer operation. And says, are we charging enough money to make sure this is the healthiest it can be financially? And not more than it should be, but appropriately, um, charging sewer rates for it. So there's a lengthy study attached to this that, uh, Mr. Williams will be happy to go through any questions you have. But the, the result is a recommendation for the next five years. Uh, there is a, a 10% increase in year one proposed. Um, and then it goes down from there, seven and a half percent in year two, 5% in years three and four, and finally 2.5% in year five. Mayor, this is, um, addressed through the city of Cocoa utility billing, uh, as it always has been. And these would be effective October 1st of this year if approved, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney, anything you need to add? Um, this is a rate change. I'm trying to catch up on something I think that you had, were able to get back to me. My question was the, 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 the way we're going about this by referendum, um.
Resolution?
I'm sorry.
Resolution, yeah.
Resolution, um, thank you. Uh, and I, and I skimmed the email. I, in your opinion, from what I was seeing, I thought that this would require an ordinance. Um, would you mind?
Yeah, I can.
Giving me an overview of why we're going? Because I think the difference in ordinance is we would have two readings, right? To where this is a public hearing item, but we only do it once.
Resolution, right.
I think with a resolution, did I say it again?
No, you didn't.
Uh, the, um, and I think when we're changing the rates on folks' utility rates, um, two readings is the safer of the two and our ordinance allows us to choose. But that's, um, those are my thoughts, yes. City attorney, if you could.
Yeah, I'd be happy to elaborate because the question that was posed, whether or not, um, section 2.12 of the city charter requires an ordinance, um, to establish city, uh, su- so city utility rates or sewer rates in this case. There's a provision in section 2.12 of the charter.
that lays out subject matters that require the city council to utilize an ordinance to, um, to adopt something. And there's a provision that says, uh, right, and this is a quote, regulate the rate charged for its services by a public utility. And the question is, is that, you know, does that apply to the city establishing, uh, utility rates itself? Like, um, um, or not? Currently, under the city code, it's, it clearly says that the city council can establish sewer rates in all revisions by resolution. Currently, you have before you a resolution, um, but the question is, does the city charter require an ordinance? Um, you know, it, I think that section in the charter comes out of the model city charter. It's kind of worded uh, strangely in my, in my view, um, because it specifically states, regulate the rate charged for its services by a public utility. Um, you know, the, the dictionary, Blackwell's dictionary definition of regulate means to control, um, an activity or process, you know, especially through the implementation of rules. And the, the authority, um, to regulate, um, seems to have this connotation of imposing, uh, some sort of control on some other firm, entity, or person. Um, in this particular case, you know, establishing sewer rates, the city for its own utility is kind of like a self-regulation, but I'm not sure that's really what was intended by this charter provision. Really no other really a thought, legal authority about, about this specific provision in the charter. You know, it's, you know, admittedly strangely worded. I'm not sure it really applies. Um, but if the council decided in an abundance of caution, it like using an ordinance format to adopt rates, the city council can certainly do that. In fact, I did prepare, you know, a, uh, ordinance which is looks almost identical to the resolution. If you prefer to go the ordinance route, we would just have to take it back for second and final reading at the next meeting. And, um, you know, it, you have the time to do that because under your code, that any rate change doesn't take effect until October first anyway. Um, so, you know, there is a, and, you know, I, I agree with you, mayor. There's a, you know, you know, definitely a little provision in the charter to wrestle with. I'm not sure it really applies in this case. Um, but I got a backup plan for you in case you want to use an ordinance. Mayor.
Thank you. We do the study every five years. We don't necessarily change the rates every five years. Maybe we have.
Traditionally, that results in that, right, Tom?
Yes, we, we have.
We have, so.
And I just want to remind counsel that this study once, if you reviewed it and you call Mr. Williams up and talk to him. This is so warranted to keep up with all the things, all the revenue that's going to be required. Uh, and we got to look at our city here specifically. We completely redone a wastewater treatment plant and had SRF loans. We didn't do a rate increase last year of two and a half percent. If we did and we were doing the study this year, it's possible that the, uh, increase this year would be seven and a half percent. But these things are done every five years to keep pace, and they take everything into consideration, all our revenues, all our operating expenses, all our debt. Uh, and this is so important to keep the ball rolling in the city. So, um, this has been done. I've been here for ten years, and this is the third time. So I'm, this is my third thing, time with this, and it's been done by resolution, and it's typically been two and a half percent per year. But everybody knows the two and a half percent days are probably gone for a while. Uh, everybody knows inflation is at twelve, at least twelve point five percent, not eight point six like you're told. Uh, I'm sure when you go to grocery store, you can see that. Things are more, much more than eight point six percent. But anyway, the point I'm making is this is crucial for this city's operation, and I'll just leave it at that and leave it with counsel, uh, to make a determination. If they believe that this is something after we've spent eighteen thousand dollars for a study, which we do every, every, um, five years. If they believe that this needs to be talked about again or re- revisited, because I'm not sure what would change. If you want to lower the rates, once you look at the study, you'll see that will propose a detriment for the city's functioning. So as your finance director, that's my advice.
Thank you. So you had, you'd, in that, you had said something about resolution. Have we looked back to see, was it, did, I'm just trying to establish precedence on, we've done, uh, this by resolution every time? Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, being that the city attorney has it drafted and it's not a substantial change, to me, I know we've done it that way. The way I read it is we should be passing this by ordinance. Um, and I think we should go down that route and it won't slow us down, and they don't go into effect in October, so. We, we can put that to the side, I think, on the method for a second, but I just wanted to get that out of the way. I, I am in favor of doing and, doing this by ordinance and giving the public two hearings to come up and speak, so. I, I, I would like to fair, if it doesn't change the substantially anything, and this council wanted to do that, is there any reason why we couldn't vote it through the same? I mean, I guess what we need to do.
Yeah, if the city council prefers to go the ordinance route, um, you're still going to conduct the public hearing tonight. Take the public hearing, and then you would pass the ordinance on first reading like you do for any other ordinance. Um, clerk's office would then, you know, do another public notice and it'll come back to the council at the next meeting for second and final reading. With this, with an effective date of October first.
The fact that you had it ready shows me you truly, you could see it either way, and I would err on the side of caution.
Yeah.
Are we opposed to having voting it the same through tonight? We would just vote it through one more time at the next meeting?
No, I have no opposition to that.
I think we've been doing it as a resolution, so I just would continue doing it as a resolution and be over and done with it tonight. We have public comment. And it's something obviously that our finance director has very, very, you know, clearly stated it's necessary. So I don't see why not just go ahead and take care of it as a resolution, and then we're finished with it.
Have you read the ordinance?
Yes.
Where it says, um, that utility rates are a reason to readings? I mean, to me.
Well, well, a lot of the.
If we vote it through tonight and we bring it back, it's not going to delay. It doesn't go into effect until October.
This is correct.
So I, I don't, we're not going to have a negative financial impact. And just because we've done it that way doesn't mean that we should continue. I think that we need to set precedence to go, no, this is a rate change. This should be fee change to utility. Two, two, two hearings is something that, that's shouldn't be a one and done, in my opinion. I think that was the intent. So. If you wanted.
I just didn't think we had much of a choice on this.
We always have a choice. Yeah, this is America.
I know, but, I mean, it's a necessity to run the wastewater plant and everything that we have.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm not arguing for or against it.
You want the ordinance?
I'm saying it needs to be read twice. Remember Davis?
Yes.
Rather, other than the resolution. I mean, I'm not understanding your, what you're saying are the benefits.
For an ordinance, before you change someone's zoning or you do something that's, you're going to change the, the local laws and you can't just go in in one meeting and pass something. They, state legislature requires us, right, to come in in our, our charter to read things twice to give citizens every opportunity to be for again. So it's, it's a.
But that's it, just the two readings? That's the only reason?
Yeah, we would do the one tonight, and then the second one would be in July. It's the safer of the two for me. If anyone got mad that their rates increased or decreased, wherever, which way this goes, they could say I didn't have an opportunity. You know, you didn't give us two readings. Um, so because it's already done, we're not taking a backseat, I think, so. Oh, like.
So do we need a motion?
If we choose, the first thing I'm looking for is, is a motion to, I guess we, we don't need to vote on the change of how we're doing this, uh, city attorney, right? I mean, we don't need.
If there's a consensus, consensus of the council to move forward with an ordinance, then I'll read the ordinance in by title. And then you, then you can engage in the normal discussion and take your public input.
You got it. Do we have consensus to, to pursue it as an ordinance? Okay. City attorney?
Daniel may have it to pull up too, I believe.
Okay, we'll give Daniel some time so he can pull up the ordinance.
Oh, this is impressive.
Let me just, uh, say it's ordinance five dash twenty twenty two. Is that correct? Is that what you're calling it?
I don't have a list.
Yeah, I don't have the number. It'll be numbered after this, after this meeting.
For tonight, we call it XX twenty twenty two.
XX twenty twenty two? Thank you.
Clarify it at the next meeting.
Okay.
The ordinance number will be provided at the next meeting. But this is, um, an ordinance of the city council of the city Cape, Cape Canaveral, Pavar County, Florida. Revising the city sanitary service fee schedule in accordance with Article three of chapter seventy eight of the city code for a city fiscal years twenty twenty two, twenty three through twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. Providing for ratification of sewer rates for sewer customers, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporation into appendix B. Schedule of fees, severability, and an effective date. This would be first reading of this ordinance. And it's almost substantially the same as the resolution in your package. Which you have all reviewed already.
Motion that we adopt ordinance number XX two zero two two.
I'll second it.
Don't we need public comment?
So, yeah, we're not, I don't think we're that far along.
Well, we have a motion on the table. Right, now you could take discussion.
No, no, I was thinking, um, we have to take discussion. So the motion is to adopt it as written? Is that what it is? Okay, good. Um, public hearing item, do we have any? I don't have any cards, any public comments, anyone who wants to speak on this? This is a rate, proposed rate increase to the sewer fees. This is a line item on your cocoa water bill that you'll see down there and the proposed rate increase is, uh, stepped up over time. But just so everyone is aware, what's in front of us today is over the next five years, the first one from twenty two, so we're in the twenty twenty two, twenty three fiscal year, it'll be a ten percent increase. And then the next year it'll go up another seven and a half percent. The third year it'll go up another five percent. Fourth year it'll go up another five percent. And then in twenty six, twenty seven, it will go up, uh, two and a half percent. And so this compounds. And unless my math is wrong, from doing the math, I believe that this is a thirty-five percent increase over the next five years. So that's not by adding up all the percentages, that's adding up the change in price. The average bill that this study came back and showed, if my math is, is correct, was fifty-three dollars for a Cape Canaveral resident. Average sewer, just the sewer, not water, trash collections, reclaimed water, none of that, just the sewer line item. We pay an average of fifty-three dollars. The, so in a year, the average resident pays six hundred thirty-six dollars. That just goes to sewer. In five years, when this goes up to almost, I guess, thirty-six percent, that same resident will pay eight hundred sixty-four dollars for sewer. So you need to understand what's being proposed today. So it goes from six hundred thirty-six dollars today is what you pay for your sewer. In five years, that same bill, same usage will be eight hundred sixty-four dollars according to my math. So a fifty-three dollar bill today will be a fifty-eight dollar bill the next year. It will then be a sixty-three dollar bill. Then it'll be a sixty-six dollar bill, then it'll be a seventy dollar bill, then it'll be a seventy-two dollar bill. So seventy-two dollars times twelve gets us the eight hundred and sixty-four. And, um, with that, any other public comments?
Mayor, Mr. Williams is here. If anybody has any questions for the consultant.
I do. Let's close public comment first, though. First, or, yes, Brad, you can come up and.
I'm just wondering if things out of the box here. Prices have to increase. I mean, look, the inflation, whether it's eight, twelve, probably closer to fourteen. But we do know that we have over four hundred Airbnb's in our city. Is there any way we can charge those businesses a little bit more on the sewer so the local residences can get a break up? Just something to think about because, yeah, they're going to use the sewer. They might not even use the sewer as much because maybe the buildings aren't occupied. But something to think about. That's four hundred businesses that we know of. Something to think about. Maybe they get a sixty percent rate increase and maybe the rest of the citizens get a forty percent. I don't know how many residences or domiciles that we have in our city, but it's, uh, maybe a thinking out of the box proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in the public? Yes, Dr. Roberts.
Is this being imposed by the city or is this the city of Cocoa?
This is the city of Cape Canaveral's line item charge for the, the wastewater treatment services that we provide. On, it'll shows up on the cocoa water bill.
And the reason I'm concerned, and I'm sure a number of residents are, is the cost of living. I'm not sure given the significance of what you pointed out, if that's going to be manageable by a lot of our residents. It just seems like an awful lot. I know it's doing good since we've got a wonderful system. But I would hope that we could get some of our expenses offset by some of these grants and some of the other things that were eligible to apply for right now, infrastructure bill and so forth. So if I could just suggest that, I just hate that we're passing this on as a individual residence increase because of the cost of living considerations in the economy right now. So I would urge the city to consider some alternative ways of getting funding, uh, to support our infrastructure.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Anyone else? Seeing none? Deputy city clerk, do we see anyone from home who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing that, we'll close public comment. I would like to ask some questions to the representative from Ray Bellis, if that's okay? Please. Thank you for being here. We appreciate that very much. And, um, nice job under report. And so did I represent that correctly, that the fifty-three dollars was the average home from your, your chart that you provided? I was referring?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I'd just like to open up, you've heard a, a little bit of discussion about this. We spent a lot of time on how we're going to proceed, whether it's resolution or ordinance, but, um, that, that increase that I'm seeing over time, when you did your study, looked at the operating expenses today, right, and how it, it's like a business, right? I mean, you're looking at the cash flow of that entity.
Absolutely.
And the clarifiers that we have there, we are considering a upgrade there. A pretty expensive system, I think, one and a half million dollar upgrade. When you did your study, did you factor the old equipment that we have, or did you consider the new equipment? Because I would imagine there's an efficiency there. We learned that he was, he had some costs in maintenance with the skimmers and stuff, so.
Um, and we focus, you know, largely on the financial side.
Okay.
So we, we did include funding for the capital investment that you have to make. Um, like with your debt service payment that comes on in the system over time. Um, there, you know, there wasn't much discussion about actual cost savings that would occur there. Um, if there's reduced maintenance, you know, potentially some of these rate adjustments could be reduced in the future. Um, you know, if there's, if there was significant savings on operating costs, which, I'll say it's, it's not very common from these types of capital improvements, there might be some minor savings. Um, you could have lower. Uh, you could have lower rate adjustments than what are identified, probably in, it's five percent years. Because right now, the, the first two years, the ten percent, the seven and a half percent. You're seeing really large increases on chemical costs that are kind of changing daily for operators of the system. You're playing catch up a little bit from other rub rate adjustments last year. And there's a lot of capital investment happening in the system. Uh, so just the, the amount of spending that's happening on those capital projects and the fact that they're consistently increasing in price. Economy the way it is right now. Uh, those, those first two adjustments are pretty important. You can see the, the fund balances, if you look at some of the charts, they're pretty low, kind of three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, your utility, which is, is very, um. Very low, this is a chart if you, um, did do any rate adjustments. But if you, if you did the readjustments, you know, they're still, you're, you're still drawing down your reserve funds. So you, you potentially end up being in a position where if you did lower readjustments, you know, you have to find some other. Funding sources, whether it be capital or, uh, funds that are, you know, used to subsidize the utility. Um, to pay for projects and don't want to. So that's an enterprise fund to average fund itself. But there, there is potential that, you know, some of those five percents in years three and four. Could be reduced if you do see some cost savings from the capital improvements that you're doing. We, we do like to take a fairly conservative approach to make sure that the enterprise fund is fully funding itself and not running. The, the tightest margins that you can imagine where any emergency or any project increase. Takes you down to a position where you have negative.
And also, Joe, if I may, those surpluses are so important because we don't know what unexpectedly would happen. And two hundred thousand dollars on something that breaks down at the plant is, is nothing. Two hundred thousand dollars gets you very little, depending on what could happen. So these balances I'm seeing as they increase, you know, these are good. I think you're staying at the absolute, uh. I, 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 I'm saying, I think you're staying very conservative instead of aggressive. And, um, you know. These are tough decisions that, you know, citizens, you know, get concerned about. I'm a citizen. I'm from Cocoa Beach. I'm a citizen, you know. And, but, these are the things that if you kind of pass off and. Don't really take a deep look at these, they could come back to bite you. And if I fall four or five hundred thousand dollars short, my mayor and my city manager is going to say, John, where are we getting that money now? And so those are the things that I have to think about. And, um, you know, will SRF loans always be available to us? I don't know what the answer to that question is. Mr. Ratliff could probably, uh, weigh in on that, but he probably can't tell you what the future of. SRF loans are. Will we get SRF loans in the future for zero percent? I don't know if we will. I can't tell you what's going to happen next year. So, just so, just wanted to make that point. We need to make sure that we're not vulnerable. And there are other cities that are doing increases and their increases are. Much larger than ours, but this is Cape Canaveral, this isn't Cocoa, this isn't Melbourne. And you can't even compare increases because they have different debt, they have different operating expenditures. They have different plants, the whole nine yards, so.
Yeah, and just quick reference that where I was mentioning the fund balances that stabilize in the report. You can see in, uh, the second year, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, getting down to around three hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's assuming no emergencies happen, uh, you know, the line breaks or hurricane causes you to. Spend money outside of your CIP that we have programmed here. It drains those funds very quickly, so. Even with doing the rate adjustments we have, three years, you're, you're running pretty tight on the utility. Um, we're hoping that kind of sets you up to operate a little, a little, um, less tight in the future years. Um, it sets you up for the future without significantly higher rate adjustments. And a lot of utilities, you know, do have their, um, their annual adjustments tied to CPI. And, you know, the most recent CPI was eight point six percent, I believe. Um, so if that trend continues, you're going to see a lot of utilities throughout the quarter doing seven, eight, nine percent adjustments. Just because CPI was reading seventy-nine percent, kind of that June, July, August timeframe, you know, there's there. Year-over-year calculations. So you're, you know, you're really not far outside of, I think, what you're going to see a lot of others doing.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the things that, like, adopting it. Five years out, I'd rather just take it one year at a time. This is extremely valuable to kind of lay out a. Five-year plan to say, we recommend ten, seven and a half, five, fives, two, whatever. Um, that's great. And then next year, we're like, okay. You know, did we end up and we can reassess, is that, that, that gives me more comfort opposed to the automatically increase. The, the cities that you compared to in here, was there any math or reason on how? Why you chose the cities? Obviously, you got a few Bovard ones in there. I see Ormond Beach. Did you try to?
We tried to stay coastal.
Okay.
Um, local and coastal, um, is kind of the key.
And so like Satellite Beach. Was not on there? That was just, I was just curious to know if that was one that you tried. Because they're pretty similar to us, twenty thousand, right down the road.
Yeah, we can, we can always look at that in the process.
No, that, no, that's okay. I just sometimes want to know what the intent was, like, so, because as John said. Everyone has different system, different needs, but knowing the approach to go, from the sample size that you did pull from. It looks like Cape Canaveral is one of the most expensive today. Um, John told us he lives in Cocoa Beach. We see why. Your bill's forty-four dollars a month. Ours is fifty-three here in Cape Canaveral.
But Mayor, not just to be funny, but my garbage costs six or seven dollars more than yours does. And that's all going up too.
And it all.
But, but yeah, you're right, you're right, Mayor. Those disparities, but you know, for instance, I will let you know that. We decided, the city manager, we, we talked, we studied this really hard. If you notice, we are not increasing reclaimed water. We are not increasing stormwater. We kept that out of the equation for the citizens and what have you, and we said, you know what? You need to just do the sewer. And, and that was the cover because we could see the rising costs. And we can see how chemicals are dou- doubling and, and all the needs that we have, so. Um, the city, I feel Cape Canaveral had a very good break here by not going across the board. And, um, uh, I think it was a very, it was a very good study. And I caution, Mayor, I will say, yeah, I, I'm sure Mr. Williams would love if you wanted to do this report every year. I mean, this report costs eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, you know, I don't think it's, you know. I don't think it's practical for the city to look at it every year because we could tell the trends, the trend, the trends that are going on and. Joe has incorporated all that into this study. That's why you do it every five years. I mean, yeah, it's worked for us. Uh, we were very lucky here in Cape Canaveral over the last ten years with increases of. Two and a half percent every year, but of course, we're in a different world now, right? Gas is five dollars a gallon and. Your eggs cost twice as much, right? So, um, there's a whole different thing going on. Jim's Chemicals down there, he showed me the price of that. I cannot believe the chemicals, how much chemicals cost from just four or five months ago. So, I think you did a super job on this and, and, you know, obviously, it'll be up to the council on which way, which direction they want to go in. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. So yes, just the, the comparison there was helpful. I didn't want a rate study every year. I wanted to say, you've provided us a five-year rate study. We can keep that in front of us, but I would, I propose that your projections where we'll end up in the end of the year, we'll know the truth in a year. Right? And we'll see how it adds up. And we adjust that rate that next year. Maybe we're a little bit higher than you said, or a little bit lower. Have you ever seen cities take your five-year plan and vote on it annually opposed to voting the five years out i- at once?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we, we work with many, you know, hundreds of cities throughout the state and the nation. And we do different levels of studies, you know, each time. So if you're doing a five-year study, we take a more comprehensive look. Each time we do it, kind of reset at the customer basis, everything that's happening, because it's been five years since we looked at it. When you look at it year over year, you don't have to go as deep on evaluating certain things. You kind of true up to say that there we are, because we have full customer data in the model. It's generating the revenues that you're actually collecting from the prior year. Okay, we don't have to dive into every single bill like we do on a five-year look. Uh, so it is something that can be updated more efficiently than the eighteen thousand that happens every five years. Um, but.
Right, and we could pull, with the mayor saying, we could, we could put, look, we could, I could look at the data next year. We could see how the economy is. We could see what chemical prices are. We can see how the debt's rolling. We can see what the operating expenditures are. And then we could reevaluate that, and we could look at the numbers that you put in this report, and I can see what those numbers may be. And if those numbers, hypothetically, not that they will be, I can't predict the future. But if these numbers were four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand dollars less, which they probably won't be, but if they were. Then I could look the mayor in the eye and say, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to re- apply a five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollar reduction to this. And I'm going to give you a rate that may be somewhat lower for the next year. I could do that.
Yeah, I'd rather, I don't like voting on, voting on things five years out if I don't have to. And so, that's good to know, but knowing five years out what you did is very helpful. So tha- that was all my questions for you. Um, does any other, I got a few more comments, but I at least wanted to leave you. Do you have any general statements that you want to let us know about beyond or?
Uh, you know, just the fact that you guys are in a pretty well-built out city. You know, this, this type of increase, um, is going to happen from time to time when you have to do major improvements. On, on the wastewater system, what you're good now, uh, because, you know, rapidly growing communities, they get the benefits of. Starting that full rate to each new house that comes, when it only costs a tiny bit extra. With all the capital, utilities are capital investments. It's, it's, it's all about the capital infrastructure that's in place. So the fact that you're not growing, you know, you're just going to be in more of a position where those rate increases are going to be a little bit higher. Um, over time than they were historically as you were adding customers. So that's just kind of general mindset to be in. Uh, I know staff does the best job that they can to mitigate. The capital investments, to hit the best prices on projects and operate as lean as they can, so. And the model that we developed, Excel model, though what John and his team, that's not a, a very confidential thing. Available if you wanted to.
Well, that's helpful. Thank you very much. Counsel, any more questions for Representative who's here?
I have a question about.
Got a question for him?
Uh, no, it's probably the.
I wanted to.
No, not, no, no.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah, and I've got. So my general sentiment is, I, um. Oh, one more question for Miss, or Mr. Moore. Could you help me understand the operating cost that you had for the clarifiers? You said it was like a thousand dollars or something. Just roughly, this new proposed clarifier, you won't have to be doing that repetitive maintenance with. Okay, what is that averaging roughly?
It's averaging about a thousand dollars.
Okay, so. Those are things that, that I'm talking about, that, that maybe this rate study didn't address, but overall, that was. We've got some other projects we're working on. I think with these new investments in the equipment and stuff, we still, should see some efficiencies in there. Okay, thank you very much.
So, thank you. I'd like to thank him too. Thank you so much for your professionalism and, uh, your patience. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have an item on the agenda tonight. About, or discussion item, Councilmember Raymond talked about affordable housing. Coming up. And I, I bring that up because. That agenda item is very important to me, and I think it's important to everybody because homeowners' rents are going up. And we talk about ways that we can help. This is a way we can help, is that. First, don't pass things five years out. Take it one year at a time. If you're, if you're tight on cash, you don't prepay. You know, your, your utility bill, but you don't do, make these decisions too far out. And though I think we need to think short-term, and the hope is that we don't have to, to increase. I think that if we had to, without assuming any illegals. That if, there was a shortfall in revenues in this fund from enterprise to. To the expenses or the, you know, expenses exceeded revenues. It would be worth it to me to figure out a way from other fees to transfer. From the existing property tax revenue from our big budget to limp our way through the first year before we increase rates. One dollar on people right now. The fact that we're going to increase somebody's living expenses for something that's absolutely essential sewer. When inflation is over ten percent, when people are seeing five, six, ten dollars a gallon out west. It is, we are on the brink of a potential crisis right now in this country, in a recession. It's, it's happening, and all the indicators in the market are proven that right now we need to be prepared. We need to buckle up. And so, this ten percent increase out of the gates. From six hundred thirty-six dollars a year, that they're already paying, I, I think. That's a, that's a month's worth of rent that they're already paying in a, in a very tiny, small home or, you know, small. Studio-type apartment. We know you're seeing four digits to get any house out here in two thousand dollars. Twenty-five hundred for single-family rental homes and apartments are fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand, three, four thousand dollars I'm seeing. And so, this is the way we can help. I can't. I don't have all the answers on how we make it work, but I'm willing to, to say, we got this study. We've been warned that if we don't do something, there is going to be a shortfall. And I say, we figure out that shortfall, then make it, taking quick action by transferring money over, and we try to cut costs in other years. This is the years that we want to figure out ways that we've got to cut costs in this budget. I'm not talking about payroll. We need our, our people. I'm talking about, maybe that project over there, we don't do. Because we need that money reserved to pay for an essential thing for wastewater for people. Every dollar matters right now. I cannot support this. We've got to figure out a way to make this work. And it, it, it turns my stomach to say that, but I've got family members, they can't. They can't pay their rent. They can't figure it out, and they're calling, and the last thing they want to know is that their next water bill comes and. You know, it's. Five, ten extra bucks, a hundred bucks, whatever it is, it means a lot. And I, I think that, that. We, we hold and we monitor it closely and we make the adjustment and monitor the trends, take advantage of the software. And say, hey, Les, team, it's looking like we're heading down. We need to make a move. I'll be ready to make that move fast. But I don't want to do it today, and I definitely don't want to do it five years out. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Yes.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. In this thing, i- it says the debt service and the, and the state revolving loans, and it, it continues, um. The debt service, uh, for the next five years stays the same. Don't we pay those loans off and wouldn't that decrease? I mean, is it, it, it's like seven hundred ninety-five thousand for the next four years. Don't the sti- uh, don't those loans get paid down?
Those loans have this, the, the, the loan payment is the same over a period of, you know, when you put. you know, when you put all the loans together, we have six or seven SRF loans, you put them together, they're paid over a course of twenty, twenty years, twenty. So a lot of those loans are relatively new, except maybe fifty-fifty and fifty-fifty-one, we've paid on those a few years. Uh, but a lot of these other loans, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, these are all newer SRF lo- SRF loans. The thing that's good is these loans are virtually no interest. But this is, and, but this is why, this is what drives us to, um, have to do this increase is because we're continually doing capital projects. As Jeff said, you know, we just, we just completely redid our wastewater treatment plan. That required SRF loans. Um, we're doing big projects. Thank goodness we have SRF loans. I mean, you know, the, uh, the debt ratio for this city is under nine percent, that's remarkable. So there's good things happening. Two years from now, now this doesn't, I don't want to confuse the issue, but there's good things happening in the city. Two years from now, and this does not affect, uh, the enterprise fund, it's the general fund, but at least two years from now, we have a loan that's being paid off, that big loan we got for five point five mil, it's going to put six hundred thousand dollars back in the general fund. There's good things happening in the future. Now, but remember, the enterprise fund is like a business, and it's controlled by user fees. The people pay their, um, sewer and reclaim, you know, reclaim water, what have you. And the general fund, you know, that's, that's government. So, and that supports all the departmental costs and the capital projects that take place within the general fund. So, uh, but, I mean, there is good news for the debt in the future, we're, we're down to fifteen million, uh, and fifteen million, fifteen-five or whatever, and we're making payments every year. And so like I said, we're going to get a, build up a six hundred thousand dollar payment, uh, in two years, in twenty twenty-four. That's a lot of money back in the general fund for this little city. And now we're going to see that, and then we'll pay another one off three years later. And the city is ninety-six or ninety-seven percent built, we don't plan on any more capital projects. We just did the two biggest projects lately with the MGF and the Cape. We'll pay that, you know, we'll pay that, make the payments and pay that off. And, um, we're not going to be creating much more debt, and if we do get SRF debt, but like again, it's, it, there's no, there's no, really no interest on those, and, you know, the city pays those back. We're going to be in really, you know, really good shape debt-wise in the next couple of years, we'd probably be under seven percent.
Don't forget the Presidential Streets master plan though.
Well, the Presidential Master Streets plan though, uh, is is going to be CRA funded for the most part, and the CRA keeps going up. My estimations are that if the, um, if the, uh, of course, we've got a budget coming up, you'll be getting your budget in about a week, week and a half, and you'll see what the proposed millage is there. And I will tell you though, but based on the millage that's in, in that, uh, in that budget, if things happen, the city will have one, give one point two million dollars based on the tax share to the, um, uh, CRA, and then the county will match it. Well, that's two point four million dollars. And as we move forward, that's only going to grow every year. Um, and that, that's going to allow the Presidential Streets to be, be funded, uh, that way. But of course, that's all predicated on what the millage is, because when you bring the millage down, then the taxes that go to the CRA go down, and then the county matches less, so. But there are good things happening.
Yes. And my hope is all that happens, and we are in a position, if a, if a property value decreasing, financial hardship happens, the city, we're, we're going to get through this, I agree, and for all those reasons. When that ser- that service goes down and we're able to free up that cash, we can maybe afford, take some hits from there. And but still, we want to do things and, and grow, and we're in a position to make those things happen. What I don't, what I'm talking about is, that won't be the story for everybody else. We're the, the big city that can survive, and so thank you for explaining that. I, I am optimistic on our future, but I just know that there's, and I think we all know, there's, we're starting to see some major shifts, the emails, the letters that are coming in, it's like people do not know what to do, and it it's really sad, but I think we can help here, so.
I just wanted to know, uh, the ARPA funds, a lot of, some of that is going into, uh, the.
Into some of the stormwater projects.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, I agree with the mayor, I, I think this five-year plan is awesome, um, and, and very comprehensive. But to obligate ourselves for five years when we don't know what kind of, what's going to happen, you know, the bottom falls out of the economy or.
That's, that's process choice here. Uh, like the mayor said, um, this is, this is an analysis based on everything happening in Cape Canaveral. And if council had decided to go, take the first year, go two years, whatever, that, that's, that's the choice. This study does not handcuff the city, but this study gives an accurate picture of what's going to happen to the city based on what we know now.
Right.
The study's based on data.
Absolutely. And actually what's, what's happening and what may happen, right.
And my last question is, is there a way, because we have so many hotels and Airbnbs, that they could, that we could make them pay more?
Actually.
That would help the citizens.
No, and the Airbnb, the gentleman who came up and asked the question there, because remember, everything's designated by something, like a single, a single resident. And, and, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but those things are all predicated on, they're based on ERUs and certain things. So if you said, well, Joe over here has an ARP, but John's got a, John's family lives in his. No, you can't change that structure, because the reason you can't change that structure too is that would have a ripple effect that would have to change even in the city of Cocoa, and would have you, as it all comes together on usage, remember that uh, your water usage dictates your sewer bill. So there's, this is all connected. So that one gentleman who made that, who said that'd be nice, no, you couldn't even do that.
What about a commercial hotel?
Uh, commercial hotels in term, well, I mean, they're charged accordingly based on whatever the rate is for, you know.
They, they already have a higher rate.
Yeah, they do, they do, the, the rates are, the rates are completely different.
That's what I wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, they're getting charged more, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. When construction, yeah. Which help us.
Okay.
Counsel, any other comments? Public hearing item, we've closed it, we brought it back, you know how I feel. If you do support it, if y'all do move forward, I would just advise, just vote the year out, you can vote it in every year. And I think we, we can look back under the hood in, in three months, six months, and if we need to adjust it, we can, we've got this study, it's valuable. And let's try to press down where we need to press down and, and limp our way through this.
Well, I, I like the idea of using this study as a roadmap. We don't have to proceed at a certain speed, but we can follow that roadmap and see where we are and what adjustments need to be made over time each year, et cetera. Um, my other question is, adjusting this year to year, is it easier to do it as a resolution or ordinance?
No, it's, it's just one extra, it would be one extra meeting.
Okay.
I mean, every year that, if you're going to wait every year to do an adjustment though, you know, it's going to have to be, you're going to have to go through the procedural requirements of putting it on the water bill, noticing the hearing, then your, your ordinance would have to be heard twice. So, um, just a little extra time to do it, um, you know. Mo- most cities that do this in a sophisticated manner will do these five-year revenue sufficiency analysis. Um, Cocoa does it religiously. Um, very important that you do it. Um, you, you, obviously the rates have to be just and equitable. The council can establish rates on, I think, you know, rates on the annual basis. If you want to look at it on an annual basis, you can, you can, uh, do it the way it's currently written as five years. So it increases incrementally, um, automatically, five years. The other option, which was not discussed, is some cities will, um, will go ahead and adopt uh, the five-year revenue sufficiency rate model each year. It will increase, but they build up, they build into the resolution or an ordinance that there'll be an annual review before the increase, the next increase takes effect, which gives the, the council the ability to reevaluate, reevaluate where they stand, and perhaps actually suspend the increase going forward or modify, um, lower, um, not higher, because that would be an increase. So there's another, there's another model there in terms of a rate ordinance or, or rate resolution. I just throw it out there for, for your information.
And, and if I, Todd, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, if we go this route, then enough time has to pass in the year to figure out what the trend is and what's going on. Could probably do that in May. You know, as you can see, because the budget's done in June, May, but I, anytime we do a change, I have to notify Cocoa sixty days in advance. So in this case, uh, one August, they need to know what our rate's going to be, which we're going to, we would know by July next month. So sixty days in advance, I have to notify Cocoa, and so they have to rate for one October to do that. They require sixty days, which we can do. And then if we go the route with the one year, then like I said, we could do an analysis in May of each year and see if it's following this pattern and adjust accordingly if you want.
Mayor, if it pleases the council, there's already a motion on the table, you could make an amendment to the motion to add a provision to ordinance XX twenty oh two, twenty twenty-two at second reading, which allows for the annual review in the month of May each year for the next four years.
That's right. That's, yeah, I, I, I would like to do that, yeah.
I think that gives us enough data to give you an accurate, somewhat accurate estimate.
So you.
So I'm amending the motion to add a yearly review in May.
Yeah, I think we need to make the motion to amend.
And I'll second it.
So, okay, I moved and amend the main motion and do a yearly review in May.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion by Mayor Tim Callum to amend the main motion to do a yearly review in May, the month of May and every year, and a second by Councilmember Raymond. Any other discussion on this amendment? City clerk.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. Motion passes to amend the main motion, five oh, add the review period every May. We're back to the main motion on the floor, which is, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, to adopt it as written. We obviously have our amendment now.
To adopt as written with the inclusion of an annual review clause, which would be added to the ordinance.
Okay, so you need that motion to say that, even though we just voted for that amendment to be in there?
No, I was just kind of restating, I think, where we were, sorry, Mayor.
And then it's first reading.
It's first reading, of course, yeah.
So we obviously know we're in the first reading. Um, I love the review, that's why I supported it, I'm just, I would rather come back in six months and discuss this, I, I don't want to do this uh, raise now, so I am not going to support it, just so there's no surprise, but I think the review is really smart. But, um, Counsel, do I have any other discussion? We got a motion and second on the floor. Anything else? And I'll.
So we are, we are on this, we're voting on the order.
Yeah.
Something clear what we're doing, okay.
Yep.
With the amendment. With the amendment, right.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
And we're going to raise the rates for this year, this coming budget year.
Ten percent will apply this year.
Yeah, so as written, the motion, unless you're going to amend it, is it's a ten percent increase this year.
Look at it next May and consider what to do in year two. We have a recommendation.
May, we'll see that the recommendation is seven and a half, and you can kind of determine if you want to do that. I might be open to, to a, an increase, I just don't want, I would rather right now. But either way. The truth is, you can pass it right now, you can go back and amend in three months.
Right.
I mean, it's a living, breathing thing that we just monitor, so.
If the only thing.
This is first reading, so we can actually.
There, yeah, there'll be a second reading, so.
But I do need to report to Cocoa on August first, what our rate will be.
You'll be able to do that, because the July meeting will be the third Tuesday, right?
Right. Right.
Just in time. All right? Good, good? City clerk, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Against.
Okay, so on first reading the motion to adopt the agenda or ordinance number XX twenty twenty-two for the, uh, sewer rates, pass three to two. This time, yes, we are at eight thirty, I'm going to call for a recess, please, we'll, once we all reconvene, we'll come back. Maybe ten minutes. Maybe ten minutes. All right, looks like everyone's tricking back in here. Counsel, are we ready to start back? Good, got everybody here? All right. And to go ahead and reconvene with our meeting, we completed the public hearing portion of our meeting. Now we're moving on to items. Uh, for action. We are on item number nine, which is to review the presentation of the final revisioning project. By Doug Thomas from Strategic Government Resources and accept the report. Ask for city manager, he might have a connection. Doug, I think, has been with us tonight. I understand he's got something he can go over with us and.
He does, and Daniel's ready to connect him.
Good. Thank you. Hey Doug, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Mayor. How are you this evening?
Doing great, thank you. How are you?
I am doing fine as well, thanks. Watching your, your meeting and realizing you're going through deliberations of a, a number of issues of meaty importance tonight. And hopefully this one will be a little bit easier than some of the topics you dealt with in the previous couple, couple sessions there.
Thank you.
Well, great. Daniel, are you, are, am I set to share my presentation? So I can activate the slides. I want to make sure I'm good to go in that regard because I don't know that I'm set up at this, at this point yet for that.
We see your screen up, Doug. Oh, we did. Now it's not.
Gotcha.
Daniel, can you put his screen back up? Okay, we see, uh, we see the report up, you know, it's a Word document, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not, no, I was looking for a PowerPoint that I have. If I can share a screen here, let me see.
Okay, Daniel's working on that.
Okay.
Daniel had it up. So I know it does work. No pressure, sorry.
Okay, we are looking at your screen, Doug.
All right, uh, at the, um, the, the actual report PowerPoint that you got.
No, we're seeing your list of files.
Oh, that's not what I want. Let me see, close that out.
There you go, there's.
All right, Daniel, what I'm trying to do is share a screen that's got a PowerPoint on it. And if we can't do this, you've got my PowerPoint. We'll just manually work our way through it, but I'm not saying is there a button that should be for sharing a screen?
I do have the PowerPoint, so I'll go ahead and display it, sir.
Okay, let's just do it that way. Super. All right, great. If you could maybe. Show that so I can at least see where you're at. There you go. Okay, super. I can work from there. All right, great. Well, Todd, do you, uh, you wanna? Me just delve in, or do you have any opening comments that you'd like to address?
I, I just want to start by thanking Doug and SGR. You've done some terrific work for us. And I'm so excited that this visioning report is, is finally available. It was important that it be delivered before the budget and you, you nailed it. So good work. Take it away, Doug.
Great, thank you, Todd. We appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to, to walk you through the presentation then as well. So Daniel will just kind of do this manually as I can see it as well. So some of these slides, the. Mayor and council may recall from parts of the, the presentations that we had pulled together. As part of the community visioning sessions and certainly part of your strategic planning retreat that's held back in March. But this will be a review of some of that information as well as some additional information that came forward. From the post-community survey. That we had worked with the staff to, to pull together. And then ultimately, I wanted to kind of land the plane at the end with. Proposed vision statement and then a review of your mission and organizational pillars that you've established. In terms of the strategic planning processes, it kind of ties it all up into a bow as well. But for the benefit of those that may be watching this evening that may not have been part of this process, or those that might be in the audience. The background information associated with this effort was really started back by the city of Cape Canaveral back in two thousand nine. And several of you are certainly aware and seeing the documents by the East Central Florida Planning Council. Where they held a series of community workshops and they identified basically the future state of Cape Canaveral. And the, the goal, as best as I can tell from looking over that document and talking with those that have been involved with it. Was really to look at establishing a focus and a direction for development and redevelopment of certain areas within the community. So it really was kind of an overall master plan, if you will, with regards to the future direction of the community. But a lot of specific focus on development, the types of development and the areas in which you were looking to. See different types of investments, both either private, from the private sector and or the public sector. And as we started, as Todd mentioned, about in twenty twenty-one. We started working with the city to assist you in your annual strategic visioning process. And looking at your strategic plan and trying to revamp that effort. And so we've been building on that last year and then continued that process again in twenty twenty-two. And this was kind of an overlap of that involving a significant outreach in your community for stakeholder feedback. And, and direction about policies and procedures and, and priorities and future direction. That, that the community was interested in expressing through a series of meetings that we'll walk our way through this evening. So the next slide then, you'll see there's basically a couple of different components in this. So we were certainly engaged by the city as part of our, our ongoing work with the community to work on your community visioning. And your strategic planning process. Specifically asked to develop a plan that would solicit input from residents and visitors and businesses. And folks that wanted to get plugged in and wanted to provide some feedback into the future state of the city of Cape Canaveral. I want to distinguish the fact that unlike the original plan that was done in two thousand nine. This plan was specifically structured for a community engagement and stakeholder input. And so there was a lot of processes that were involved to try to get as much feedback as we could from interested individuals within the community. That wanted to provide direction and feedback to you as elected officials and a staff. And that process, although we did not have the final strategic planning post-visioning. Survey results that were completed at the time that we were gearing up for your annual strategic planning process on March thirtieth. As you may recall, we did provide you some input and based on the feedback and the direction that was secured to date. So they could be contemporary as you were starting to develop the, develop the process of putting your FY two thousand twenty-three budget together. So the next slide. Uh, the process here, really just for summary purposes, is to identify the fact that we started a kickoff survey to get some initial feedback. Uh, from your residents and stakeholders. That ran from January third to the seventeenth, as you can see. Based on the feedback we'd received, they had about six hundred and fifty participants that provided input into that effort. Uh, that was followed by three different community visioning meetings. They were all supposed to be in person, but because of an uptick in COVID. Uh, in your community, the first one on January thirteenth, we had to pivot fairly quickly, uh, close to the event. We ended up having about fifty participants in that virtual session. Uh, the next two sessions were held in person. As you can see, we had around seventy to eighty-five folks in participating in those. Some of those individuals were repeats, others were new faces each time. Appreciate the staff. They were the ones that were able to capture some attendance with regards to some of the, the people that were in those sessions. Um, I mentioned earlier that we also met as part of your annual strategic planning process and your annual budgeting process. We met with the council on March thirtieth and did provide some additional feedback and reactions for you to, to take into account. As you were outlining your plans and direction for the upcoming fiscal year. And then as we laid out the original program, after the, the sessions were all completed from the community. Opening, the public sessions that were done. Uh, we put together a post-visioning prioritization survey, which ran from May fifth through the twentieth. And we had about two hundred participants that were involved in that effort. And then tonight will be the culmination of the presentation of the draft report. And with hopefully your acceptance and approval, we can take the draft off it and go from there. So I want to just provide you some feedback in general about some, a lot of good feedback and information that came forward from the community. These questions that were put together were intended to be open-ended. Uh, basically a lot of direction, both from the online survey and the onsite survey. And then I'll talk to you how I did the post-session survey in order to help provide some prioritization. And, and kind of help you land the plane with regards to where I think your, the pulse of your community may be at some of the major priorities and efforts. So the next slide. Um, these were just some preliminary information that came from the kickoff online survey. All of this document that I'm going to be showing you tonight is available in the full report that you have available as part of your agenda packet. Uh, generally speaking, when you ask people about where they felt that, why they decided to live in Cape Canaveral. You can see the climate, location, beach, nature, uh, most driving factors were the small-town feeling and quality of life. Those are themes that you'll see that came up throughout the process as well. Uh, next slide, what did you like most about Cape Canaveral? Once again, all these are from the kickoff survey. Uh, that small-town feeling, quality of life, the convenience was something that was very much challenged or cherished by your residents. And your stakeholders, close to five hundred responses out of the six hundred that came forward to kind of fill into that bucket. And then clearly the climate, the location, the natural beauty of your area was certainly a strong second, with others really falling pretty significantly behind that. Um, as you all know, we did a SWOT assessment of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Uh, I've included for tonight's purposes just the online survey. But I didn't want to identify the fact that if you go back into your report. I've got a cumulative list of all the different strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. That were derived from individual meetings with you as part of the strategic planning process. The online survey information, a pre-strategic planning retreat effort from your staff. As well as all the feedback we had gotten back in major categories from the various community stakeholder meetings and survey information as well. So, uh, for brevity, I did not include all that, but they are certainly all included. I think they start on page nine and run through, I think, page thirteen. In the draft report that you have before you. But in a high level, um, the strengths of the opportunity, strengths of the community are recreational opportunities, community events. Preserving beach and wildlife, infrastructure appearance, all viewed as strengths. Uh, and that, once again, that common theme of that small-town community feeling certainly was a strong effort as well. Uh, that were identified in the strength category. Under weaknesses, a challenge, not surprisingly in Florida, given the growth that we're experiencing in the state. Uh, that was a significant issue of a potential concern, the growth management, code enforcement, the state of the buildings, the overall look of the community. As it's experiencing the growth factors. Uh, and then some other challenges that also came forward with infrastructure, traffic, flooding, streetlights is pretty significant as well. And those will be certainly drivers as we go deeper into the study as well. Under the opportunities, um, some significant areas for improvements or beautification, environmental protection. A focus on sustainability and the overall kind of look and appearance of the community I've just categorized as kind of a cleanup area. And then the other opportunity is the, uh, the, the ability to leverage the port, the cruise industry. In fact, I just saw, I think this week was the new Disney Wish cruise ship line that came into your port as well. So congratulations on that. No doubt that's got a lot of attraction and impact in your immediate areas. That, that ship calls the Port Canaveral its home port. Under the threat areas, um, some significant areas that were raised more than others were climate change, pollution, littering, disaster. Under the threat areas, um some significant areas that were raised uh more than others were climate change, pollution, littering, disasters, destruction, environment, flooding. All that leads to some trends that came up during our discussions. Uh and also an impact on how do you balance the tourism and short-term rentals, the concern about will the growth of tourism have an impact on your small-town feel? And also uh the impact that coming out of COVID, what was the loss of the tourism net like? In terms of threats and and how dependent the economy is there in Cape Canaveral to the impacts of tourism. And then other things that um you would hope that will stay the same in Cape Canaveral. Uh once again, this major emphasis about you've got this quality of life and a perception of the small-town feel and the sense of community. Something that you wanted to certainly your residents wanted to maintain as something they wanted to stay. And then also a driver issue of clean beaches, nature, outside areas, the look and feel of the environment, so to speak, a strong second with regards to. Uh things that you wanted to, the residents wanted to have uh keep the same in this city. Um so those bar charts and you'll see these interspersed, but I wanted to also add some other items that certainly came up and and highlight these as we go deeper into the presentation. These uh next several slides are going to also identify things that came out of the visioning sessions. Uh so the other ones were the kickoff surveys. These are directly things that were coming out of feedback and they're obviously been summarized into major categories. But uh things that hoping stay the same, certainly beach accessibility, preservation of nature, natural open space, parks and areas. Uh that theme of the sense of community, small-town feel. Uh Friday Fest, the affordability, public safety, multi-local fo- focus, a lot of community sense of community with regards to the community projects. Uh a recognition of public art, quality municipal services, availability of small and family-owned businesses. And the real sense of pride that you've maintained your residential zoning on your waterfront, so both along the ocean and the river. And limited the amount of building heights uh to maintain that local, smaller, uh less dense feel within your area. And then uh a renewed emphasis on sustainability and focusing. Um from the kickoff survey, other things that they would like to change, as you can see, three different areas that really kind of came up significantly. Um the traffic, pedestrian, bicycle, safety, infrastructure issues, local amenities and activities, beautification and services. And the appearance, the fixing up of buildings and rundown buildings and the overall appearance of the area were were drivers as well. Uh the next slide out is uh feedback to that same sort of question as it related to coming out of the various sessions that we had held. Uh some discussions, these are not, I would highlight, these are not in any priority orders right now. The prioritization kind of comes at the end as we do the post-survey. Um information, but as you can see, some discussions about your branding. Uh the lack of a downtown area, retail restaurant opportunities, uh how do you handle future growth of development? Um obviously discussions about appearances of business on A one A. Uh I won't go through all those, but you can certainly get a flavor of the types of drivers that took place there. Um coming about of things that uh your your community is looking for changes and potentially enhancements going forward. Next slide, um amenities that might be added or within the city of Cape Canaveral. Obviously, the bar charts are going to represent the pre um the kickoff survey. Uh safe bike, pedestrian pass, crosswalks, infrastructure activities and green space and beach-related type improvements were your major drivers. Next slide. Uh what should be added or improved? These were feedback from the various sessions aggregated as well. Once again, I'm not going to read through these all, but you can start to get a flavor. About uh the types of recreational assets, uh the types of shopping and amenities that are looking for, desire for open and green space. Certainly a theme of A one A safety came forward. Um public transportation to the airport uh was also came forward. A lot of discussions about a farmer's market. You'll see that come up later as well as a major driver. And then the overall safety, uh public safety issues as well, maintaining that. So some good feedback overall in terms of uh amenities that were being desired within your your city. Um ask a question about what should the city have in ten years that it doesn't have presently offer? Uh you can see basically a desire to main to enhance shopping businesses, design, basic services uh across the board. Uh concept of a clean, safe beach town community is kind of a sense of what your community wants to be as it continues to grow in the future. And certainly this concept of walkability and bikability and the interconnectivity of your various assets within the within the city. Um this, not surprisingly, um question generated a lot of feedback in the various sessions we had. Uh we started to see a theme coming out about looking at enhanced infrastructure, stormwater streets, water, wastewater utilities. That was something that really just continued to to rise and it certainly raised uh its its uh importance in the final uh post. Uh session survey as well, but you can start to get a flavor from these discussions, multimodal connectivity. Uh the types of things that you were looking for in retail and restaurants and grocery shopping opportunities. Um the expanded green space and how does that the footprint of that look to maintain that lower density feel within your area? Not surprisingly, as your community and your demographic shaped out, uh there's a desire for assisted uh living and retirement-type complexes and other services for aging residents. Recognition of the sustainability and the fragile, unique nature that your city has on its waterfront in terms of how do you reduce your carbon footprint? Uh transportation options, once again, A one A safety issues and a variety of other activities and projects there. I think you'll see, uh if you go to the next slide, Daniel, as well, there's a little more additions. An impression about what your community reputation should look like. Uh dogs on the beach is either you love them or hate them, so I can't give you a sense of that. There's a little bit of split thought on that effort. You've got to juggle that one internally. Um recognition of financial stability being desired, synergy with the port. Uh the potential of undergrounding more utilities, especially given the climate change issues and this concept of connections to. Uh outside of your city, a bright line train stop at Port Canaveral was another item that came up quite a few times. Um during the uh the sessions, we ask a question just to kind of say, forget about the dock cost, forget about the politics, forget about whatever it might look like, you know, wave that magic wand. What are the things that you really think would be important that you could do? Uh as you can see, the the driver on this one was improving the appearance and the overall look and the curb appeal, the beautification of the city. Followed by that sense of maintaining that small beach town type community, uh where your two major drivers in that factor as well. So if I go to the next slides here, um the next couple of slides then are going to say, after we've looked at the data and started to pull together the information. What we want to do is then put some quantitative sense and meat on the bone with regards to where our push came to shove. If I force your participants in a survey to identify their top three priorities to a series of four questions, what would that be? And so I've included both in the report, certainly in these slides, the first one had to do with what are the things that you hope would stay the same if they. Your residents now, you had close to two hundred residents who participated. Uh they selected their top three priorities and as you can see, basically the uh the ones that came to the 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 top there were. Uh beach accessibility, cleanliness, keep uh free parking, no meters on the street, that that sense of the communal with nature that you have and your residents and stakeholders like. Uh strong desire for the preservation of natural areas, parks and open spaces. Uh followed closely by that sense of community, maintaining that sense of community. And then um I gave a fourth one only because it was pretty close, that residential zoning of waterfronts both along the ocean and riverfront and limited building heights. Was something that we came, we saw a lot of going forward. I know you maintain a a a limit, a a degree of height restrictions on that. Uh but I wanted to make sure that that was still kind of front and center in your radar, that that's something that's very much desired um as part of the overall look of your community. Uh the next slide, um once again, forcing the decision for three different priorities. Um the most, what are the things that people would like to change? Um that limit of limiting or preventing future hotel development. I don't know to what extent that how much is too much. Uh but you also have to deal with property rights and what your zoning ordinance is, but there's a sense there that that's a factor. Uh obviously, that's uh that's tied uh uniquely to the port and tied to your tourism activity. So. Uh there's a sense of just be tuned into, there's a desire to have a balance of of how much uh that type of growth you want to continue to have going forward. Uh another driver on this one was the infrastructure improvement, stormwater streets, water, wastewater utilities. That that kind of covers a big bucket, but that was a theme that that certainly generated interest and not surprisingly, when I asked. Uh them to rank that as a priority ranked up as one of your top three in this category. And then this concept of less tourism development and short-term rentals. Um this gets back to the what I would see as your sense of how do you balance the need for. Your tie to the port and your tie to the commercial and the tourism industry with trying to maintain a sense of that small-town community. That's a unique line to kind of balance and walk on both sides. Uh it appears you've been able to balance that to date. I would just uh urge you to continue to be focused on that to try to determine. At what point do you hit a point where you're not sure you want to continue to to grow in that area and that that you're comfortable with the mixture that you have between your. Your hometown feel and your smaller community feel and the balance of of um uh the tourism on the community as a whole. And the last question had to do with um asking about what amenities could be added or improved and forcing those into those three categories as well. Um not surprisingly, it didn't, you're a couple of very close ones, enhanced multimodal connectivities, trains, bikes, uh trails, bike paths, sidewalks was a major factor. Uh followed closely by A one A safety. I think that's there's a direct tie in there, and I know there's been a lot of conversations about A one A and the roundabout and what that might or might not bring to the community. Uh and then interesting enough, I mentioned earlier about the farmer's market. There was, that was your third highest category. When people responded to this question, so that may be something that you may want to be focusing on in terms of just as a service or how that how the city or. Your CRA may be able to accomplish the ability to try to address that, but there was certainly some strong effort. That was a comment that came up quite a few times in the discussions as well at your sessions. Um the other one was the uh the overall uh improved community appearance and curb appeal um with fifty-one votes. I I included that as a fourth one because I think it related to the overall vision and what that sense of community was. Uh I think you'll see some themes there as we try to develop ultimately your vision statement. Uh to capture what we think you as elected officials, your staff and your your stakeholders have told us through this process. Um the uh the last category then, the post-community visioning session. On what should Cape Canaveral have in ten years that does not presently have or offer, asking them to select three. Obviously, there was more in this bucket, so a little more to choose from. Uh as you can see, the categories were maintaining or reducing building height restrictions along the waterfront. Um the uh second highest was enhanced infrastructure, stormwater streets, water and wastewater utility type services. Uh followed by under uh the um uh bright line station uh to stop at Port Canaveral. It's got back to that interconnectivity approach as well, and that certainly has got some attention and traction elsewhere in your residence. And then um this concept of uh the improved health of the lagoon and the manatees, I think goes back to. Recognizing the important and the fragile nature uh and and unique position you have in the waterfront as well as on the riverfront area there. And and the ecological eco-balance in that effort. So when we went back to the original plan, um and I've said this last year and I said it the previous year. Um that the original envisioned Cape Canaveral really was much more of a planning and future development and redevelopment document that outlined kind of a general direction. Of where the community wanted to go in terms of its look and feel. And so what you ended up having was a of kind of a five paragraph area that was that certainly provided direction and we we used as part of our strategic vision process. You may remember I took several of the themes that came out of this and we developed your pillars. Uh in two thousand twenty-one, and so this plan still has a life to it with regards to it. But I also said that as you're working on a contemporary strategic vision and trying to integrate that. With your strategic planning process that you probably are going to need to tighten this up into something that most of your residents and your employees and you as elected officials were able to capture as well. And so basically, as I said, it the planning document served the purpose. It continues to have a life. It continues to shape the direction of your community. And it certainly has had input with regards to development of your strategic visioning program. Uh but what we ended up doing then is coming out of this process, trying to get together a much more concise vision statement that captured what I thought were the essence. Of the feedback we received from your residents. Um we ended up drafting a statement that we're putting for your consideration. Uh that you can see as follows, Cape Canaveral and and engaged, inclusive community. Embraces and preserves its special and natural accessible ocean and riverfront shorelines, open spaces. Promoting safe, multimodal interconnectivity, balanced, sustainable and architecturally attractive developments. Through a business-friendly philosophy and the provision of public infrastructure systems to meet both the current and future community needs. That's actually a little longer than I would have liked, but um to try to capture the the drivers that we had heard from you as elected officials, from your stakeholders, your staff and your community. Uh my sense was hopefully we were able to capture those major drivers as we worked our way through this process. Now that's really part of this effort. As we move forward, you adopted, I think, at your last meeting or two meetings back. Um the report associated with the strategic planning project that took place on March thirtieth. So the mission statement that you've now adopted has been repeated here as well, the vision statement, the mission statement and the organizational drivers of your. Pillars and your organizational values are all part of your overall strategic effort. So the mission, you've already adopted this. Is to provide the excellence in municipal services by supporting a high quality of life, fiscal responsibility, leadership and environmental stewardship. Uh celebrating the diversity and fostering innovation. So um that one has already been part of your process. And then also the next slide, um I've just repeated here to show you the. Um I'm sorry, it's one more slide up. I'm, Daniel, I didn't give you the the heads up to switch. There you go. Um the next one is your strategic plan pillars and statements. You may remember in two thousand twenty-one. We simply broke down into the five different pillars of multimodal sense of place, sustainability and resiliency. Community engagement and economic vitality and development. Was part of our effort with you and your planning design, we then started to put some meat on the bones and actually add statements. And the goal of that is so that your community recognizes what these things mean, and then I'll talk to you shortly about as you continue to evolve your strategic planning process. How do you track your progress as it relates to this? So words do matter so that everybody has a shared understanding. Of each one of those strategic pillars and the projects that will then fall under those efforts as well. And then just in closing, um in terms of the process that you've got before you, you now have. Uh in two years, a lot of work put together on putting together a new vision statement. Um you've updated your mission statement, you've established your strategic pillars, and now you have statements associated with that. You've also gone through and updated your organizational values. And so those are the main components of what we refer to as contemporary strategic visioning and planning. That allow you to start to continue to grow your strategic efforts and and track your progress and and give you a roadmap going forward and how you want to achieve that future. Desired state of Cape Canaveral. So a couple of things I would leave you with at this point as well is that we recommend that on an annual basis, you at least review your vision, mission pillars and organizational values. And especially after any elections take place, because all of you as elected officials really set the tone in representing your community's desires and and wishes. In addition to your own thoughts about as an elected official, but if there's changes on your council that occur because of people coming on or off council. Uh they really have to have uh skin in the game and they've got to have a chance to get their arms around it. And you may make some tweaks, you may not make some tweaks as those changes take place. But really, that's the direction you're providing as an elected body to your administration so that they can start to develop programs, policies, projects and procedures to help achieve those visions. And then lastly, as uh I've spoken with Todd and spoken with all of you as well, your last piece is. The the next evolution that I see you coming as you're looking at twenty twenty-three and beyond is actually identifying key success indicators and measurements. So that you can actually track the progress and report to your community and report to you as elected officials. The progress you're making on your goals and objectives, because the effort is if one of the things that we often see communities do is a strategic plan that sits on one side of the shelf and their budgets to sit on a different side. And the two don't relate. Um you're doing a a great work in terms of linking those documents. We really encourage that work. The next evolutionary step is to have you start to put some meat in the bones to be able to put those and track that on a regular basis so that you can make sure that you're making progress. And talk through those issues that may be challenges where you may have to rethink or make some changes going forward as well. So with that, um that kind of gives you a sense of the document before you. Obviously, it's an over, it's an overview of the the written document. Now you have the the written document. I certainly have avail that available tonight as well. If there's any questions you've got, but I'll stand for any questions.
Doug, thank you very much. Um. Wow, I know how, just look at how much work has went in this. A lot of time has went into it and and I think. We are, we are all very appreciative for your time to go through this with us today, so. I'm I'm going to give it back to our city manager at this point.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Molly Thomas. She was the staff member who really worked. Tirelessly on this to make this happen and big, big thanks to Molly Thomas for that. Thank you. Um so one of the things that the mayor and I talked about um recently was the idea of an annual citizen satisfaction survey. Uh and that could tie in with this recommendation that Doug has about an annual review. Of the vision, how are we doing in keeping up with that? And I I hope to talk to more to the coun. Talk more to council members about that, but it's an idea the mayor and I are currently kicking around. Perhaps an annual survey or maybe a biannual survey. Um and that would be born of this. Um the other thing I wanted to point out was um the agenda item that you're looking at tonight is requesting that you. Uh formally accept the report, the visioning report, make that official. Um and second. Um, and secondly, um, if the council has the appetite to uh adopt or amend the vision statement, now that that doesn't have to be done tonight. We can think about that and bring it back next month. But I've I've read through Doug's vision statement probably twenty times now, and I just, I can't think of a better way to phrase it than what Doug has already proposed. So two things I'm asking tonight. One is accept the report and two, uh, if if you have the appetite to accept the vision statement. Um, Doug corrected me uh that the mission statement that Doug read aloud a minute ago was approved as part as the as part of the uh strategic planning retreat. So there's no need to adopt the mission statement. It's already been done. It's the report and the vision statement that is at the council's feet right now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um. We have a lot here in front of us. So just to recap, the the two options, as you can see on the agenda cover sheet, we'll be deciding tonight is A, formally accept the responses written for immediate adoption. And B, um, accept the report as a draft and formally approve and amend the proposed vision and mission statements at a later meeting. Um, I'll just jump out here. My initial thoughts are for the the vision, which we just heard the clarification. I want to hold, me personally, I think we should wait on the vision. It does, that's such a big decision that I feel like we need to circulate this. I don't know the answer. I don't know if it's another meeting or workshop, another outreach, but I don't feel right about adopting the vision tonight. Coming right off, hot off the press like this. I'd like to to get it out into other and maybe work with with staff on how we can get other people, even if it's just me on my own, to send out some emails and ask some questions and try to get feedback from the community before we adopt that. And that's, that's a big decision. Um, we know how much it's been engraved and literally up all over the place. And so those are my statements on that. It sounds like mission is already adopted. As far as the report goes, um, this is really valuable. Um, I would like to accept it as a draft. Um, because there are some things that I think I really need to come back and go through. I I'm not sure though what we would have the ability to change. I mean, this is just the report, right? I mean, so I fully accept the report if you're looking for a vote for that. I mean, that's okay, okay. I guess I got confused on the draft. It says a a approve it as a draft.
It is a draft report. Um, once you approve it, it becomes final.
So approving the draft, what's the difference in A and and B? It says formally accept the report as written for immediate adoption.
If if I could maybe jump in here, Todd, that maybe provides some clarity there.
Please.
Yep, certainly. So um, Mayor, you're you're correct. I mean, obviously, the data speaks for itself. Um, I've tried to 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 put some some meat around the bones explaining the process in that effort. I am totally sensitive. I I I I understand. I'm not trying to force the decision on on the on the new vision statement. That's something that I agree with you needs to have a chance for you to kind of settle in and be comfortable with. Uh, as you may know, when we tweak the mission statement and tweak some of the other language, we go through some some iterations of that. So you've got my best shot at it. But I also recognize that, as I said before, you've all got skin in the game. So hopefully, it's close to what uh ultimately you might view as the final vision statement of the city. Um, and so that's really the only piece that we probably need to clean up in a revision. Um, i- in terms of whatever, whatever changes that may be made, if if there are changes just to your vision statement in the document. I think the rest of the document is pretty much driven by uh the results of the survey and the results of the information you feed, the feedback we've gotten from the material. So I'm sensitive that if you're concerning about what to do next, um, but to make it final, obviously, I I think it'd be helpful for you to have a a final approved vision statement in your final report. And if that needs to be tweaked or modified, or if it's good to go as such after you've reviewed it internally and had some chance to react to it, that's the only piece that I would need in order to kind of take the draft off the off the uh document.
Thank you for that clarification, Doug. So yeah, um, uh, as as Doug stated much better than I did. Accepting the draft report is accepting it as it is with a draft vision statement. The data is what it is. That's not going to change. But when you accept it final, it would be with a vision statement that you all approve. And then Doug would take the draft stamp off of that.
Understood. Yep, that's helpful. Thank you. So I guess I I fully accept the the draft. I want to circulate the vision. I don't think we're in a big rush here.
No.
For it, but there's nothing I can change. I think this is a huge opportunity to get this out and we're coming up on our sixtieth birthday. This next year, March, and it would be, I I'd be fine with putter and get through this budget, the real priority and things, and then continue to get this vision out and work with with the citizens and launch it at our sixtieth birthday. I mean, it doesn't have to be overnight. But I understand Doug needs to draft a final report if it's gonna have a final vision. So, um, I don't want to do that, but those are just some ideas. Thank you. I'm finished.
Are you ready for motion?
Well.
Make sure everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I would like to see our direct staff to bring back the vision statement with some modifications in it. Get some input from us in a informal setting if possible. Um, it may be one on one, just passing information back. Getting input from the public as well. Um, I think there's some tweaking that could happen. Um, but the report's the report, but I would like to see a little more time put into the vision statement if we can.
Mayor, what's a good timeframe for that?
We all agree today is, I think it just feels like today is too soon. Sixty days, uh. Man, yeah, uh, what are we, July, August? I mean, what time's the budget over? Fiscal year starts October. Can Doug draft the report without the vision? So we don't hold him up or is it gonna be a big?
You, Mr. Mayor, I, from my standpoint, I mean, I I'm, I'll I'll certainly work if if there's adjustments uh to the vision statement. Um, you know, I can, you've got my commitment. I can make that, make that adjustment without a problem. It won't hold us up at our end. We can, we can, we can wrap the project up but for finally clientizing the report. Um, obviously, we've got an ongoing relationship with you, so I'm not concerned about that. If we can need to, if you want some more time to work through that, go through some adjustments. I I recognize kind of the visceral reaction the vision statement has to the community and certainly want you to feel comfortable with the final document. You've got my commitment, even if everything else is done, we'll just, we'll just put in the final vision statement into the the final report and pull the draft off whenever you ultimately approve it.
Pick a date.
What do y'all think?
Well, let's see, ninety days puts us out to October one, close, doesn't it?
Fiscal year, right? That's kind of nice. Launch a new vision with a new fiscal.
Yeah, I I would.
So Mayor.
We're gonna, we're about to get in the budget and it becomes total.
Everybody's gonna be busy.
And I think it's gonna take away from crafting the vision. It may not change a bit. I, by the way, I like what I'm seeing. I just want to make sure the citizens.
We'll target this for return at the at the October council meeting. In between now and then, I'll have Molly work with each of you and you'll work with me too. I'm getting your revisions to the vision statement. That works. So the formal action for tonight would be to accept the draft.
Okay, we good with that? Looking for a motion to accept the draft?
I'll make a motion. We accept the draft.
I'll second it.
Absolutely. Would you like to say something? Okay, well, now it'd be the time. Come on up. We got a motion and a second on the table to adopt and feel free to.
Earlier visioning effort is very encouraging to see the building upon that effort that you all are undertaking. I would like to ask about safety. To me, the theme of safety tends to be a bit lost from what I'm seeing in the visioning and so forth, but I'm just mentioning that as an observation. One of the things that we talked about in recent months is implementation planning. And some of the things that Doug has come up with because of the citizen input are actionable items. This is where with the budget formulation for the coming year, to me, there would be some kind of a crosswalk of sorts between the actionable items that came out of the strategic work that has been done and what you all are doing with the budget. Um, and of particular concern, and I know we've talked about it just now, the height restrictions, the hotel proliferation. Is some of the infrastructure improvements you all are talking about that come out of the visioning. Um, the welcome center was another one that was prominent in this last part of the report that Doug gave. Um, I'm just mentioning, I don't, I'm struggling with the implementation strategy to make these, make the visioning efforts actionable. And uh to link it in with the budget formulation. I know you all said, wait, we'll wait for Doug's report this month, which I'm so glad we have. But I think we've kind of figured out, in my opinion, the citizens would be looking for how do we enter, interweave this into the budgetary planning. And also, you know, the pushback on things you all probably saw on the social uh media, you know, the pushback on the new hotel. I'm just using this sample of that. You know, we used to have ordinances that would, you know, guide the development of the city and that's just not happening. Where we don't have a balance of private property rights with the vision of the residents. I'm using that as a sample. So they're saying, well, what what is what we say make, does it make any difference at all? I'm I'm just using it as a sample. Height restriction, same thing. You know, we had a strong height restriction in the earlier visioning effort, and we've seen that go to the wayside. And that came out like Doug said, you know, as one of the primary pieces coming up. So I don't know how you all would make that actionable and actually follow up on that um, on behalf of the resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I got one comment to that because I think it's important. In our um, our ordinances, maybe your charter. With, there's a budget process that follows. And in there, it says, as you are well aware of, serving that we should, there's a justification or ties it to the goals and the vision and the sustainability of the city. And the ca- and that might have been the capital improvement plan. There's a part that talks about the importance to do that for capital improvement planning in the budget process. And I think that this year, as the the budget's being prepared. Will we be able to look at this report and the actionable items is a question and see it reflected in the budget? That would be a success. I think we agree. As we've got two or three budget workshops or one or two at least, and and then we've got multiple hearings and um, we know the budget calendar, think this council has an opportunity to take this report that's now ready tonight. Have it side by side and to try to make sure we're trying to align it up as much as we can. And that would be the best accountability that that I think we can do. I mean, Stronger would say that actually in the capital improvement plan, it says fulfills the vision, you know, strategic planning report item, actionable item seven or whatnot. I mean, I don't think, I don't know if we're there yet. I don't think you're literally tying things in there, but I know we used to do that a lot for vision items.
No, what it what is tied in to the budget is what as a result of the strategic uh retreat, the things that council wanted. The projects and those things are all in. Budget, everything that you wanted is in this budget. Now, when it goes further into what you're talking about here, that'll probably have to be discussed if. But if everything that you wanted in the strategic retreat, as far as projects and what have you, is in this budget, which it had to be based on, you know, your direction, city manager's direction, that's what you'll see on July first. And then if there's things you feel that should be tied to that in addition to, based on what you're talking about tonight, then that gives staff if there's areas that you want to us to go in to change, and then that would take place between twenty one July and sixth September. Because I say twenty one July because the council meeting is twenty July, I think. That's the right date, or nineteen July. But you will see this, and we're doing our final tweaks, but you will see this um on one July. There's no, today is the twenty second of, what's today, the twenty second of June? What is it? Twenty first of June? So what I'm saying is there'll be no other changes to this budget between now and one July because we have to get these things tweaked. Run this off, put it in books for you, and you'll have it. So, but beyond that, when you look at this in the first two weeks of July, then if any of that stuff that you're talking about, you want to incorporate it into this, then let me know and we'll head down that road.
And there's other areas, Mayor, I think to Dr. Roberts' comment that we can, it's very important that we spread the gospel as far as the implementation plan. And certainly, I think that our our development review boards, our uh development review committee, so community parents board, planning and zoning board, development review committee, Dave, all of those should have access and um a presentation, a familiarization with this draft report. So they're also in touch from the early development side because so much of this is about the future of the city as it develops or redevelops. And those boards need to have access to that information too. So we'll we'll do our job there.
And when the budget comes out, July one, seven AM, just checking now, I won't get, I will. If you would be willing and it counts, or we could even make it public, I'd love to go through it together and try to connect as much as we can. And and we can come back and and work through it. So, you know, that's important. Yes, we're at nine thirty if as long as, no, that's okay. We're gonna, we got a motion. We'll take up a vote right up here.
I think we're talking about the budget, which is very important and tie in there. But also, we've got some policy questions too that come out of this report.
Mm-hmm.
Um, things like the hotels, the height restrictions, things like that, that may not be budget related, but they are policy related and values related and so forth on behalf of the residents. And that part of the implementation plan is also an avenue that I think the residents can be asking about.
They're setting some dates for those. We can go through that as well. Yep, good point.
Thank you. Uh, I'm I might be able to, might be able to help you out just to help connect the dots if you would like on on uh what Dr. Roberts has stated as well as what Todd has stated if you would like.
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, um, so uh, Daniel, can you go back to slide thirty one? And I just want to kind of give you a connecting point because you've already kind of started this process. Um. Right, right there. Okay. So as part of your your, as you may remember, um, I gave during the presentation that the strategic vision starts with the roof of the house, if you will, that that analogy of building a house. And the vision of your community is really the roof. And below the vision, that becomes the the mission of the organization that becomes the strategic pillars and and what you're trying to accomplish. And then it comes into actual operating budgets and capital budgets that actually forms the house and and how this is all connected. I believe that's what Dr. Roberts and certainly what uh Todd is mentioning as well. Um, what we've done to date with you as you've worked through the strategic vis- or strategic planning process on March thirtieth is we've, as the staff has developed projects, initiatives, programs, uh, capital efforts, things like that. They all fall under one of these uh five different pillars, multimodal sense of place, sustainability, community engagement and economic vitality and development. Some of those are going to be actual capital projects. Some of those might very well be initiatives that come forward. It may be a zoning change. It may be a review of your zoning ordinance. There were some land acquisition policies and discussions that took place, things like that. But basically, all of those things that come out of those conversations with you and staff and the conversations that come out of the the results of the community visioning statement will ultimately have a home under one or more of these pillars. And when I talk about getting, number one, we we do some prioritization, which you've done at the last round, so you can get some sense with push comes to shove. When the economics are tight, how do you, you know, what are you gonna definitely want to make sure it gets done in the upcoming year and and you don't lose sight of. But above and beyond that, um, all of those other initiatives, well, we have a home. And that's what I was getting at at some point. This may help drive home the point that Dr. Roberts is raising about key success indicators or key performance indicators, whichever way you want to classify them. It's saying, this is what we want to accomplish. And then we're, you know, how do you track the accomplishments going forward? That's kind of the actionable plan and the implementation plan. Um, and I I recognize that it's a lot of stuff coming at you in different areas. It sometimes takes years to get all the pieces all lined up appropriately. You've done a lot in two years, so I don't want you to feel badly about that. But it can take three to four years for a plan to really be a robust plan where that stuff kind of all falls in one cylinder. So recognizing that this is where you would ultimately place those items that all fall under these pillars and then obviously. And then obviously we're, we're to work with you going forward, help you develop key success indicators and measurements and things of that nature. So that you can actually have that, uh, that implementation plan built into your processes as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Doug. Okay, any more questions, Council? Got a motion. Remind me, it was, um. Who made the motion? It just was. By Councilmember Willis in a second by. I think while we had it on the table, it was Councilmember Raymond. It's getting late. To.
To accept.
To adopt the draft.
Accept or adopt?
To definitely accept and to adopt. Well, we can adopt.
The motion was. To accept.
To accept the report.
Right.
Yep.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
All right, motion passes five oh. This time we're at nine thirty five PM. We are on to item number ten, which is to ratify the composite city managers' performance evaluation and discuss determine how to proceed. For the revisions of section two salary and evaluation of the employment agreement. Between the city of Cape Canaveral and city manager Todd Morley. Every year the city goes through a valuation. Uh, process with the city manager. And we've got this window of time where. After we execute a contract annually, we go. And we consider, uh, raises and the other amendments to them. And I know, um. We have Melinda here who helped lead these efforts, heads up our HR. Um, obviously Todd is here. He is, may not talk as much during this one, but thank you. And, uh, Council, it is on us. Thank you very much for putting together the, the totals. Overall, we, we each individually ranked Todd on a one to five scale. We did some changes this year. Um, to a more, I think a simple, easier process. But the range, the score range, one. Being on the low end, five being on the, the best side. Uh, we all went through and took the time to do that and allows us to give feedback for Todd. And in there, we've got some analysis that was provided. Um, for him and I will this time ask Melinda. If you have any. Thing you want to address or introduce that we should consider.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff. I really liked the form that you suggested this year, Mayor Morrison, the ICMA form. Because it was a lot cleaner for me to get all the scores, the composite scores and, um. Was able to read a lot nicely. And what I did this year in addition was I did a salary analysis. It went out to the district, about a hundred and eleven entities was reached out. And only this many reached back to me. And so I was like, okay, well, and to your one point, Mayor Morrison, to the, um, Rafferty Study Guide. I had the city of Bonnell and I was like, okay, well, I'd rather hear about. The local municipalities that are coastal. So I reached out to them, which is kind of tedious because a lot of them wanted you to do a public records request and all that good stuff. But I got the data and I analyzed it best I could. And then I got some other information, you know, their salaries, the populations of the cities. And for Brevard County, for the city managers of the cities listed there. Um, the average two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two percentage increased for the city managers was eight point eight percent. Now, some cities had a big increase. Rockledge had twenty one percent. Grand Valkyria, such a small little place, had nineteen percent. West Melbourne, ten percent, Satellite Beach. Fourteen percent. So I know everybody's heard of the great resignation. Now it's kind of the great reshuffling. People are jumping around because there's low staff and people want to retain good staff. And so after I analyzed the numbers some more. The average Brevard salary was a hundred and forty three thousand dollars. So. If you are going to keep up to par, my recommendations are highlighted in green. That hundred and forty three thousand would be represented as in a hundred and forty two thousand on the very bottom scale. Chart there on the bottom right. And that would be my recommendation just to stay competitive because. From the HR perspective. It's hard finding good staff. And the city manager's doing an awesome job. Not saying that because he rates me, but he's. He's, he's fair, you know, um, he's honest. He doesn't blow smoke like I've seen prior. Staff, not gonna say any names. And, um. Yeah, he's doing a great job. And the staff here in the city is really happy. We're gonna have turnovers like any other organization and it's usually people who want that extra buck, you know? And it's usually the younger employees. Because the older employees like June down at the plant who's been at the city for thirty six years. Tim, the arborist, who's been at the city for twenty seven years. Paul Prince, one of our operators for thirty four years, Cheryl, our payroll lady, thirty three years. I mean, not gonna say how old John is here, but. You know, it's a good place and. The atmosphere, I've been at the city for five years, as you all know. When I came aboard, there were a lot of eggshells. There's no more eggshells. It's a really nice place to work.
Thank you very much. Council?
I have a question, um. On this chart of, uh, the percentages and the salaries. Is it the experience, years of experience documented anywhere for these?
No, I mean, years of experience, you can use that as a variable, but honest to God. You know, you can say the same as me. I mean, HR experience, I had my experience in the military. You know, Todd's been with the city for twenty years. I, I could add him to my list of long people, but he knows how the organization should be run and he values. And everything that we bring to him as ideas, like, well, let's talk to council, make sure everything's aligned, you know? So I, I honestly don't think the years of experience as a city manager, but as a leader for a public entity, he's. Been the economic development director, he's been the building official, the CED director, he's basically hold every position in the city except for the plant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, well, I mean. Experience is valued. I mean, you have to. To, to go to the person that has forty years of city manager experience and say. Bear that to somebody who's been twenty years with the city. And is that the person who's making the one hundred seventy one thousand or the one hundred eighty one thousand? I don't know. And so I think. Just for the future. I value pay based on experience. I know. Our last city manager justified his pay towards the end. You're damn right, we value Todd's longevity with the city of Cape Canaveral. And I think it's a big part of why he's in the position he is today. But, um. Thank you for, for going out and trying to pull this data in. It looks like the, you know. All of the data is not the same. You know, every city's different, but trying to look at the smaller cities. You can do it on, you know, look at the total budget they're responsible for. Some cities have airports, some cities have. Huge responsibilities. I think employee size is a metric that I, that I would value. Um, obviously how many people you're responsible for is very important. Um, I think our former city manager had roughly forty five, fifty here, but his prior at Winter Haven, hundreds. Great and, and, but granted. Doesn't mean it's easier. It's just something that I think that we look at. And so when I was able to at least see Satellite Beach, Cocoa Beach, I know. Those cities are, are similar to us. And the only metrics I could see was population. And it's all over the board. If you based it on population. I mean, the, the lowest paid per capita. Is the. It's like three or three dollars and sixty nine cents, you know, a head or whatnot, or thirty six dollars would be like on the high end. So it ranges from three to thirty. But on average, it looks like. One way to, to, to try to compare an apples to apples is. Cocoa Beach and Satellite, they're twelve. For example, Satellite Beach is thirteen dollars and thirty two cents. Per, per individual. Just as a metric, they do this for, for other pay too. Melbourne Beach is twelve dollars, I'm sorry, Cocoa Beach is twelve dollars and eighty six cents. So once thirteen, thirty two, once twelve eighty six, they're right at thirteen bucks roughly. If Todd is, correct me if I'm wrong, currently at a hundred twenty four thousand dollars?
One twenty five.
So Todd, in one hundred twenty five thousand. Uh, wha- what? What is his last agreement? What was his last raise? What did we agree to?
Actually, my apologies, sir. On attachment four, you'll see his current rate at a hundred twenty seven thousand, seven thirty on the very bottom.
Yep, but doesn't, does that include his car allowance?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, that's a added three percent. Yeah, um, okay, it's fifty nine sixty two, so take that down. Okay.
So I was right, one twenty four?
One twenty four.
Okay. How, is the one twenty four? We didn't approve a fifty nine dollar raise. We approved. Todd, you might remember, what did we approve? Was it, it was, was it, it was an annual, it was one number?
In the contract.
Yeah, the last raise.
The contract was one eighteen.
Okay, so it's an annual number.
In the contract, subject to annual raises as determined by the council.
Okay. And then in that contract, there was also a portion for a monthly auto. Bill, which was three hundred fifty dollars.
For pay. No, I'm sorry, per month.
Per month. Okay. The, the, so we agreed the first one. Your opening contract opened up at one eighteen. Is that right? Yeah, and then. And then it, the last one. You had a raise though since then.
Last June. This is the second evaluation.
So June is what bumped it from one eighteen to one twenty four? Okay. And the one twenty four does not include the three hundred fifty dollars a month?
No, no, that's just the hourly times twenty eighty.
So thirty fu- three hundred fifty times twelve.
Yeah, we just did it, twenty eighty times the fifty nine is one twenty four.
But does that include?
No, that, that's not, that's. That doesn't, that doesn't include, you asked if it included the three fifty?
Yeah.
No.
The, the three hundred fifty a month?
No, 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 you're, we're talking, we're, when we say the three fifty, we're talking, that's the employee appreciation with the.
The car allowance.
Oh, no, he's talking about the car allowance of one seventy five.
About what we signed in his contract. He's got a provision in his contract for three hundred fifty dollars a month.
Okay, with the one seventy five then.
Forty two hundred a year.
Forty two hundred.
John, I haven't been getting paid that extra.
What's that?
I have not been getting paid that extra vehicular allowance.
No, you have never, you didn't, um. You didn't, you've never, I don't think you've ever even used the car. Have you used the car? You haven't used the car?
It's computed in my pay stub every two weeks and it, it's shown there as pay as part of the one hundred and twenty four. So it's, it appears to be deducted from it.
So. And, and take your time. I think, you know, the question is. What would be the total without? Is it one twenty fours with or without? And so if one twenty fours without. It would be forty two hundred a year. Let's see, Councilmember Raymond here was just kind of chattering out loud and I'm, I'm with her. So one twenty eight. Hundred twenty eight thousand, two hundred. That's. And I have not opened that file, but. I think. Your expense report for the name Todd Morley, not including other reimbursed expenses or anything, or just car and salary. Should show something around one hundred twenty eight. Two hundred. While we can keep multiple, oh, whenever you're ready.
We're gonna just check his face. I just want to see is, if the fifty nine dollar rate includes the.
We're just trying to figure out where he is today.
Is it one twenty four? It, it has to. Thank you. That fifty nine includes that one seventy five. That does. That includes it.
So you get, Todd gets paid biweekly?
Yes.
And so you have one seventy five. For, for biweekly, because you, well, you take three hundred fifty dollars, you divide it in half. That's what you did.
Right.
There's a flaw. There's a flaw in that math. If you do that, that's going to be twenty six pay periods. You're gonna pay him. An extra month. Should be, so if he's been getting paid three hundred fifty dollars.
No, there's certain pay periods where, uh. You're based paid. Two pay periods a month, twenty four. And there's certain items where things are left out for two pay periods because you're.
Beautiful. Yeah, I was just, like, it's, it's not that big of an error, but. When you divide it in half and go back, okay, so at the end of the day, the, the, um, the fifty nine sixty two. Times. Let's say your, your conclusion again.
Includes, includes the forty two.
The, the, the forty.
Forty two hundred.
So a hundred twenty four thousand. Includes the forty two.
Yes.
So that means. One hundred twenty four thousand minus forty two hundred. But if you're act- if you opened at one eighteen. You're now at one hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred. That just does not seem right to me. We gave, we wouldn't have, we gave him a bigger raise. Because that's only a thousand dollar raise. I don't think. That's what I think. I think he was at one twenty four. I don't remember. And that makes sense.
Yeah. So his car allowance is not including the hours. The hourly rate is totally separate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I'm looking here at the time, we're at nine fifty two. So.
Yeah, so. So Mayor, the fifty nine sixty two does not include the one seventy five.
So if you take the fifty nine sixty two times twenty eighty, how many hours are in a year? You'll get his current salary of a hundred and twenty four thousand, zero, zero, nine point sixty. And then he gets the car allowance of one seventy five biweekly.
Right.
Yes, you have.
Well, it's in your, well, it's in your.
It's on your paycheck. Sorry.
So that's, so, so we approved.
And, and according to what Jenny provided us today, it shows it on the two thousand and twenty one through this year breakdown too.
Okay, so the, the. We approved a raise to give Todd, get Todd from his opening one eighteen to one twenty four. In addition to that raise, he was making, uh, three hundred fifty dollars on average a month. Uh, which added another forty two hundred dollars. So his annual. Cash, whether he's getting it or not, it should be. A hundred, and I say that sensitively, Todd, I don't mean that, but I hope you do get it. It was approved. You have the contract. A hundred twenty eight thousand, two hundred. When you add in the forty two hundred. On top of his a hundred twenty four. When you add in the forty-two hundred on top of his a hundred twenty-four. So, Council, we are, while they're figuring that,
Yeah, because he's starting in October.
We're approaching ten, we're going to have to make some big decisions right here. Let's try... Okay.
Later number.
Yes, Mayor, with the, Mayor, your last comment, the answer, which you said, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Twenty-eight. With the, so that gets you where, now you know where you're at, with the pay and with the car allowance.
Okay. I'm going to need a motion to extend this meeting.
I'll make a motion, we extend thirty minutes.
Okay, got a motion to extend thirty minutes by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis, that would have us stopping around ten twenty-five, that would be thirty-five minutes. I have a ten-thirty motion, I didn't get it, we fought. No, yeah, thirty, ten-thirty. Okay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Motion to extend.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four. Motion passes five oh to extend to ten-thirty. We got confirmation that Todd was a hundred twenty-four thousand roughly. The added on car allowance should bring him up to one twenty-eight, two hundred, is what he should have had in the year. Okay, are there any other monetary benefits that Todd receives? Like if you were to run-
It's a PTO incentive, if you, you know, if you work through, work through, all staff get them, but if you work throughout the year, you get three days of pay, you get twenty, twenty-four hours of, of pay, if, you know, you're, you're not missing, you're reporting that you're not going to be out of work, and you know, and you're given a three-day notice or whatever, the city manager does that, so, that's an extra thirteen hundred and sixty-one dollars last year.
If he complies and-
Right.
That's a positive incentive, the, all do for employees, so one thousand three hundred and sixty-one, if he qualifies. Okay, so that's maybe money.
And then the only other thing is the employee appreciation gift with the Christmas
Christmas.
Bonus, which is, is three fifty-one ninety-three.
Three hundred.
Which in essence is two seventy, let's just say it's two seventy-five is the appreciation, was last year, and fifty, fifty dollars for our Christmas box.
So what's the total?
Three fifty.
Three hundred fifty dollars?
Fifty and two seventy-five, three twenty, that would be three twenty-five.
Okay, so just trying to get one twenty-eight, two hundred, but roughly, we're ju- we're like, I'm at a hundred thirty thousand, just under. One twenty-nine nine one one, or nine eleven, that sounded horrible, sorry. Hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars, roughly, give or take fifty bucks, I don't know. I'm asking because I want to know, like, the total package that he's, that he's got. And financially, we'll look at a salary, and we'll see, wow, when you start adding up this other stuff, that helps, which is good. So Todd was at, you know, one twenty-four, but there's another roughly five thousand dollars, he's up to, to one twenty-nine. These percentage changes, where it says three percent, I, I don't know how to do the, well, I, is that based on, that's a three percent increase from his current rate at fifty-nine sixty-two? If you increased it three percent, you're at sixty-one forty-one? And that's how you get to the one twenty-seven?
That's correct.
Okay, so the fifty-nine sixty-two is a hundred twenty-four thousand? Because we take that and we multiply that by twenty-eighty?
That is correct, that's his hourly rate, that doesn't quote, include allowances. That's his salary, thank you, Anthony.
Yeah, I know we have, Ali, I, I would prefer to do this in salary, it's just easier. But I know the system does, yep, so one twenty-four. Okay. Todd is currently at one twenty-four, the, just to compare, for, we got ten thousand people, he's at like twelve dollars and fifty cents a, a resident, if you're just using, this is the only metric that was on here. Uh, Satellite Beach is thirteen bucks a resident. Uh, Cocoa Beach is thirteen bucks a resident. So Todd's fifty cents short of those to a resident. That's not the end-all be-all, I'm just saying, he's in the strike zone for those folks, now. There's other people that get paid a lot more with a lot less people, and so I'm a big fan of raises, I think we should give raises, and I think this is something that we need to to obviously discuss bef- I don't like going to fifteen, because I think if that, if you do the one forty-two, and then when you add in, I mean, that's gonna, that put, that's a big jump for us, and so I, I think I've said enough, I all the employees of Cape Canaveral are very important to me, and my, my issue, and I'm just going to talk openly here, this, this is the only way we're going to get things done, is if Todd's getting a fifteen percent raise, there's, there's a lot of employees here, and I would like to balance that out with what everybody's getting, and so Todd's got a big job, he's who we have direct control over, and we saw my evaluation, it was good. So, I think I've said enough. I would be more in favor of if we've got a good number, and I, and I don't want to base this off bad data, but he's at one hundred twenty-nine thousand right now. And so the starting point, he's already at a fi- five percent higher than we thought he was, when you add in all the cash. So if we did a fifteen percent, he's going to be about one, almost, he'll be pushing one fifty, one forty-seven, one forty-eight in total cash, if we gave him a fifteen percent raise, and you add in the, the four thousand, forty-two hundred in car allowance on top of that, and if you, I mean, I want to hear, if you want me to, to, to make a Rosa, I can tell you, I would be in support of doing a five percent raise today, and then in six months, a subject to review for a second raise, and, and we can consider a se- a separate raise there.
I'd like to make one clarification.
And that's in, that's a hundred eighty days, we go back and we, and we, and I would be willing to vote what that raise would be today, and stair-step it over six months.
We only, we do this once a year.
No, I know, I'm just saying, you would, you don't have to come back together, but it would be a five percent, and then maybe it's three percent, and automatically in six months.
I just want to make one clarification too, I mean, you really can't use the PTO incentive as part of the salary.
I did.
Yeah, okay, good, because if he ever, if he got sick unexpectedly, he doesn't get, you, he'll lose that, because he didn't have PTO without a note. But, and I think, if I may, just from my own perspective, is look at it from, don't count in the, the car allowance right now, but, but go from what his actual hourly pay is, times the twenty-eighty, which comes out to one twenty-four, right, Melinda? And then look, you could loo- look at the chart and make some assumptions based on however you would like, and, and increase that you support based on that, and then bring the car allowance in after the fact. I know you're probably doing it, you may be, uh, Mayor, you're probably doing that already internally, but maybe other council members would take the hourly, say, well, jeez, maybe I want to go up to nine percent, and then, that, then the new hourly would be sixty-four ninety-nine, and then you would add in a car allowance, I think, if you do that type of methodal- methodology, uh, you know, maybe a better way, maybe that's what you're doing already, you're just using a different percentage, but-
I was just taking forty-two hundred and adding it on top of whatever I see down here.
Right, right.
That's just flat, that's hard, that's in his contract.
Because looking at the average current salaries, a nine percent, a nine percent increase with his car allowance, will get him at about one forty. Nine percent pay raise with the car allowance will get him at about one forty.
Mr. Mayor.
So. Correct, yes, sir.
In my experience, owning a couple of businesses with, uh, different levels of employees, I've always had one or two people that were always count, I could always count on, and you had to, you had to hang on to them. Um, I would be more inclined to go to the nine or eleven percent. I don't want to, I, I never liked revisiting raises. Felt like it kind of short heated the employee. You give them, you give them a raise so that they can plan for the year with that, and I would be more inclined to go with I would, I would like to go with eleven percent, but I, I would be comfortable with nine percent.
How about we do, um, right in the middle, ten percent, but what I'm saying is, is we don't come back together, we do five percent today, and then in six months, it rewards him for getting to that milestone, and he gets a second raise. Automatically, no vote, that's, to me, it's a very common thing.
The, the problem is, the problem is budgeting, and each family has to budget, you budget for the year.
Okay, and five percent, then, then I think that that's a good raise for today.
I think that's, I think, I agree with Don, I think, you know, he said nine eleven, let's go ten, let's go ten percent.
We have a lot of employees that all deserve different, whatever they believe, and then whatever they're, we think they believe, and I know Todd has said, here's what, what I want, we're trying to find it. We are, if we set a precedence here, there's other people
Yeah.
that, that work for our city, that, that-
Excuse me, Mayor?
We are seeing-
But we're talking about retention also, and what-
That's right.
You know, I'm also looking at, I know who needs and who wants a city manager, who's looking right now currently, I know who's retiring, and we want to make sure that we keep Todd Morley as our city manager.
The other cities that are our size, I'd like to see him be in the same range, um, for doing a fantastic job, and a very similar job in the cities that are the same or close to the same population, so I would like him to see, to be in with those cities.
Okay, I, I do agree, though, that experience does count, and, you know, like, in the case of Rockledge, Brenda Fettro has been city manager for many years, I know that for a fact. And Satellite Beach Courtney's been city manager there for a lot of years too, it's going on, it's eight years, eight years. So, and I do think that that has something to do with how you're managing and your leadership in the city. And, you know.
I think eleven percent gets him there to be competitive with these other city managers.
I think so too, I agree with that, I mean, of course, you know, I'd like to be able to afford to do double, of course. Um, but I mean, you know, looking at our budget, and, you know, what we have to do with infrastructure, and looking at the figures that we had from the survey, and our, then I'm thinking in terms of what our residents said, that infrastructure was right at the top. Well, you want infrastructure, and you want stormwater, wastewater, well, it costs money to have those things. And that's what I think, when we talked about the budget for those wastewater projects, it costs money. And, you know, you get the money from utilities or from other things, so I think we have to look at the whole picture, I'm trying to look at the whole general picture. So I, I agree with Don. I think we should go with the eleven percent.
So eleven?
Now, go with the eleven percent, it's all done.
So he's at, so that's a one hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-one, and then plus the, the forty-two hundred, and if he takes advantage of the PTO, but I won't calculate that. So he's basically at one forty-two after car allowance. Roughly.
Yeah, that's what I, I, I'd like to propose. Go, go with it, it's all figured out. Do you want a motion? Are you ready?
No, I want to make sure everyone has a chance to talk, I've said enough, but, but yes, Mayor Pro Tim?
The difference between the one eighteen and the one twenty-four, what, what is the percentage of raise, what, what's the percentage?
One eighteen and one twenty, it's like five percent.
Five percent, okay. And the one, I mean, the car allowance, a lot of, you know, their car allowances aren't included in this, you know, all I did was a percentage change in the population. So, the other city managers, because I do remember when Todd's, um, contract was written, his car allowance was a lot lower than other city managers.
My other question is, what percentage, what, the other employees, are they all getting a raise, and what's the percentage?
And Mickey, it's a very great question, um. Currently, the city staff gets a three percent, um, raise, but with the Florida minimum wage, um, I've talked with the auditors and worked with people, and being presented in the upcoming budget that I've worked on quite a while, it's going to be okay, and that's been one of my stress factors, is retaining our staff. And the compression chart that I'm doing for all staff across the board is pretty equitable, so it'll be okay with the city managers.
And what, what's the percentage?
I can't release that information until the budget's released.
Well, we've said that it was three percent in the past, we've talked about that for years, is that number going to change?
Well, I can tell you that, I, I can tell you this, because the transmittal reflects this, and I'll, I'll just read this here, because this is, this, this is the budget, and I could say this, what, um, Todd, with, Todd, with your permission, could I read this that's in the transmittal listing, for the budget? Okay, so, the, um, so for employee salaries, the twenty-twenty, twenty-three budget includes a three percent, the three percent, I'll, I'll keep out the extra words, the three percent pay raise, okay, merit increase, all right? But, uh, in addition to that, the city will be internally implementing the ca- a cost of living increase, and an annual wage adjustment to offset the impacts of the Florida minimum wage laws to twenty-twenty-six, uh, twenty-twenty-six. What this will do is, it's going to help make things more competitive, we're going to, and we're going to do what some others says you're doing, and Melinda could explain this better than me, but we're going to do a compression, so maybe somebody who has a salary here gets a ten percent increase, and somebody who has a salar- a salary like mine will get a four percent increase, and what that's actually doing, it's, it's, it's making it's making it more equitable for everyone as you go up, and what it does too, it, it protects people, like, if you worked for, if you had a job employee making wickets, and you, um, got paid, you were with the city ten years and you got paid X amount, well, if you hire somebody to do the same job, they don't get to come on and make as much as you did, and sometimes that happens unfortunately, in companies and cities, in, in, and, and that goes unnoticed, and people are, you know, people are caught up in that, so, to make it equitable, that person- So to make it equitable, that person who is with the city 10 years and is here may get a 10% pay raise because they're making $35,000 a year. And then the person that came on may be making, you know, less than that. But then it goes up the scale like that. It's, uh, Melinda's.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, John, but Mayor, it does answer the point about other employees. But bottom line, this is not about employees tonight. This is about our city manager making sure that he's compensated and paid a merit increase based on his duties for this past year. And also in comparison to the other cities and where he's at, you know, and we could sit here and compare apples, apples, oranges, apples. But, you know, you guys have to decide what you think he's, you know, worth.
As a council, we have to consider his raise and everybody else's.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's fine.
Got it, okay. And, and that's where we were addressing it in this upcoming budget. You know, this past few years during the pandemic, it's been kind of hard, not knowing, you know.
Just one more. A budget comes out and then do his raise after.
Well, no.
We got a big decision to make, and so, I mean, we reserve the right to really ask whatever questions we need to get to what we need.
Right, and we're.
This is very important to us.
Yeah, and we're giving you that answer, but let me, let me make one more important point, and I think this will do it. As you decide and determine what the city manager's pay raise should be, it is the city manager who dictated to us to make sure that the employees are taken care of, and there are equitable adjustment, adjustments in here that in turn could throughout the year make me possibly get a 9% pay raise. So the city manager is not being overly compensated, especially the high position he has, based on this scale. Because you need to know that the city manager in turn is taking care of his employees. And I think that's an important element. It's not like Todd's getting, we'll get this pay raise and then the employees get 3%. No, Todd has discussed for hours in the last couple of months about how he could make our pay equitable, equitable, because we want to keep our quality people. We don't want to lose any people, and he wants to keep quality people. That's why he has deputy directors and what have you. If God forbid something happens to me, somebody could step right in. If I have to leave for two weeks on an emergency, somebody could step in and keep the ball rolling. Todd's done that. Todd has done that. Not me, not Melinda, and he has been the one to give us, whether it be a lump sum or whatever he's considering. So I think that says it all right there.
Are you ready for a motion?
I, I would like to, I think that if we go 10% plus the, the automobile thing, four, nine, 10 or nine, I mean, if we did five, we don't, we'd need to go up from that a little bit, but, you know, and I, I, it's not against, we don't, we know that Todd's doing an excellent job, and, and you guys are excellent staff we have here. We want to retain everybody. But the bottom line is the money. So, you know, and we have to approve the money, and we have to approve the budget. There's all, you know, where do we go? So that, that's why we're asking the questions, not that we doubt anything that Todd does or anything that you guys do.
And it's maybe you people would help because you haven't seen the budget yet, but given Todd an 11% pay raise works in this budget very nicely.
Okay, good.
So Melinda, if I'm correct, you said that these other cities, this was just their, their salary from an hourly rate. It did not include their car allowance, correct?
The only thing I asked was for their salary. I didn't ask for any allowance or benefits.
So I know we're talking about the different percentages and stuff and 11% or whatever. And I'm just looking because if you say 140, you know, put in 146 to 150, I know a lot of people aren't going to approve the 15, but if you do 15% at 142, you add the 4,200, that puts him right in with the other cities.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, and that's not even, that's including his car allowance, where they're not even, that's not even included for them. But that does get him into the, the range of the other cities and still us.
This is just, there's not enough data here to make an educated decision. We got, we're going off population, we're going off of this, and so that's okay. This is valuable, it's good, but to say that we're going to take an outlier like Rockledge, 181,000, which has three times the amount of people that we have, that really skews the data, that pulls it up way up. And, and when you have, you know, certain cities that aren't in here. So I don't want to set the standard that it needs to be up in this range. I'm looking, and I agree, I think average pay is right around, you know, the, the 125 to 145 range. And I think until we can see, you know, there's, we could divide this up 100 different ways, I think Todd is worth a raise. I'm in support of a 5% raise. And then over time, he gets another 5% raise, and I'm willing to do that. And I think that's reasonable. If we want to do 11% or 10%, I don't support that. I think if we want to come down in the middle, that's okay. Do you mean, that's.
I, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. I propose the 11% raise for Todd Morley. And I move for an 11% raise.
So let's be clear on what 11% means. Do you support the 137,651? So make sure, because that's important.
That, yes, correct. 66.6618, the 137.651. I support the 11% thing.
And I think we adopt that, that the annual, I know, I'm not trying to, we want to have a clear motion. Melinda and John, please correct me for a moment. It's important that we're, this will be amended in his contract, or you want a bottom number, I would imagine, because that's consistent with his original agreement.
And when does this start?
Improve an hourly rate of 6618. He will get 6618. But since we started in a, at 118, I think the vote would say, we vote for 137,651 salary?
Yes. And when, when does it start?
That's the same rate, and it's represented with 137 and plus his, our allowance, then, yeah.
When does it start?
It starts on the very next, well, it's effective, but I think.
On his anniversary date.
Yeah, anniversary, well.
And when is that?
I believe it's effective today.
Thank you. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
It's today.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so we got a motion on the floor for an 11% raise, which equals 137,651 by Councilmember Raymond, and a second by Councilmember Davis. Council, any more discussion for? You want to move on this one? Okay.
Ready? Councilmember Davis? Mayor Pro Tim Callum? Mayor Morrison? Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Congrats, Todd. Yes, sir.
It's an honor to serve the city.
You are very much appreciated, and I know that gets nerve-wracking for everybody, but yes, glad that that's behind us. Thank you all very much for your help.
Thank you, Mayor Morrison. Thank you, Council.
Okay, at this time, we have reached the 1022 mark, which means we have eight more minutes. We are through item number number 10. That, yeah, we got 11, 12, and 13. If there's any of these that we can do fast, 12.
I think we need to do 12 because that's one of the ones that was the last.
Voting delegate of Liga Cities, let's, I mean, do we have any object, can we just get that one done with now? Are you okay with that? Good. Anything you need to let us know about that, we'll get it through quick. Okay, I think that's a no-brainer. Looking for a motion to designate one city official to be voting delegate for the Liga Cities 2022 Annual Conference.
I'll make a motion to have Angela Raymond, Councilwoman Raymond.
I'll second.
Question. Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Callum. Councilmember Raymond, do you want to do this?
Of course.
Willing and able? Awesome. Thank you. Any comments? Councilmember Willis? Okay, got a motion and a second on the floor to nominate Councilmember Raymond, City Clerk.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
That's passes 5-0. Congrats. Thank you for your support and representation, Councilmember Raymond.
I'm honored.
All right, item number 12.
This is the Ovivo.
Yes, so we're at 124.
1024.
I, yeah, yeah, did I say?
Still thinking salaries.
It's okay. I wish it were the afternoon. I'd be at the beach.
I got, I got way too many questions, or, or not questioned. I got, I can't see myself getting through this one.
I thought we talked a lot about this and had quite a discussion last month.
We did.
My concern is the safety issue.
Yep. There, there's issues with this that, that that I don't think the city attorney, do you believe in your opinion that we have satisfied the requirements for sole source? That's my first big question. And when I read through, you provided the guidelines, but I didn't see where you confirmed from your understanding if we meet those requirements.
Well, I gave you the guidelines. I think whether they need the requirements is, is going to require the technical opinions like I advised during the last council meeting. I mean, there, there are, there is a basis for determining sole source based on the technical advice that you get. And in terms of whether, when you balance it, whether the technical advice you get justifies moving forward with sole source. So, you know, I, I can't, I mean, the staff has, has laid out, you know, some of the, some of the, you know, some of the issues and, 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 you know, the, the comparison between, you know, what they've gotten from Ovivo and a conceptual estimated estimate from Tetra Tech. So you, so they have all that data. You know, at the last council meeting, we discussed sole source. And sole source isn't just that there's just one vendor on the planet that can do it. In this particular case, where the city's proposing to use Opera Funds, I've laid out some of the guidelines that come from federal procurement rules that clearly, from a legal perspective, demonstrate that sole source is more than, you know, just having just one vendor on the planet that can do the work. You know, sole source can be, you know, based on a previous, as I put in, as in the report, a previously developed or produced major system of highly specialized equipment. You know, where, you know, award to the sole source would likely create either substantial duplication of cost that the government could not expect to recover through competition or unacceptable delays in meeting agency requirements. That's one example of, of, of sole source guideline. And your technical staff has to advise you regarding whether there's any substantial duplication of costs that could, could, that they could not expect to recover through competition. And whether there, or whether there's going to be unacceptable delays in meeting the city's requirements and doing the repairs that could justify going with a sole source. I think staff laid out, you know, through the assistance of Tetra Tech, that if you didn't go with Ovivo, then there would have to be, you know, the Tetra Tech or some other engineering firm would have to be hired, and you would have to prepare all new final, you know, engineering plans in which to actually, before you can even put a bid on the street. And staff gave you the technical estimates about how long that would take versus, you know, going with Ovivo. And they give you an estimated, you know, cost of doing that. My understanding is you would not have to, you know, retain an engineering firm to redo plans because you would be relying on the plans that Ovivo prepared when they were awarded this, this contract years ago. So there's no need to duplicate engineering plans again because Ovivo is going to rely on what they did many years ago to basically do an in-kind replacement of the equipment. I mean, so those are all factors for the council to consider. I mean, I'm not a technical expert. Jeff and, and Jim can give you, you know, more of the technical aspects of either going with Ovivo or going out to bid. At the end of the day, you know, the, the council has to make a judgment call, you know, based on the guidelines that have been provided. I don't, you know, I, I think there's these, you know, I, I don't think there's, there's a wrong answer here. Whether you go out for competitive bid or go sole source, it just depends on whether or not you, you think the circumstance is justified doing so. So I, I would encourage you to listen to your technical experts because they know, you know, the details.
Okay. I did not hear a strong opinion or any opinion on that, but that's okay. You provided the guidelines. And I want to hear that based on the things that I've heard from, from the technical experts, if the city was ever challenged with something like this, I am, we are in a very strong position to show justification and defense based on, and I read this agenda several times, looks like staff is claiming substantial duplication of cost and delays. And the other criteria that listed, we do not meet that, that what I can see. So, but you only need to meet one. My big issue, I got an email from Citizen Pat Campbell. I think we all got an email. He, I know that he said that he wanted to speak tonight. We're at 10:30 right now. We need a motion to extend immediately.
I'd make a motion to extend 15 minutes.
Motion to extend by 15 minutes, taking us to 10:45, by Councilmember Willis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Callum, City Clerk.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion to extend passes. And so I want to make sure citizens have comments. Daniel, do you have a comment from Pat Campbell? He had asked how he can get on, and I said we would have virtual live stream, and that's important. I think he was the only one.
Yes, he has a hand raised at this moment.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Campbell, we've just started the Ovivo proposal reconsideration. I got your email. I think it went out. And I wanted to give you a chance to have public comment.
Well, I was wondering if I was going to get to do that. I also had my hand raised for the Todd Morley salary discussion, but nobody asked for public comment. So on this particular issue, I see the email that's on the screen. I actually sent two emails. I sent that just to let you know I wanted to speak. But I also sent an abbreviated summary of my issues and my, my concern and my feeling that the city has not met the criteria for sole source. I certainly understand the utility of sole source, but I also understand why there's laws and regulations that are intended to make it a little bit cumbersome and, and, and complex to execute a sole source contract. And I say I sent you an abbreviated summary because I tried to get some information from the city to substantiate the claims. And I did that through public records requests, and what I got back was an estimate of cost of $1,000 to give me the information that I requested, which is information that should have been available when any due diligence was done to research sole source in the case of this clarifier set. The city hasn't met the requirements for sole source, and I kind of detailed what, what my concerns were in the, in the much longer email that I sent to everyone up there. It's pretty self-explanatory, I believe, and I laid it out why I don't believe you met it. And the good news is, you don't really have to figure this out because the government's already set up a watchdog agency to determine whether or not sole source is being abused and determine if Opera Funds are being spent correctly. And I fully intend to file a complaint. But this is my complaint to the city. You have not met the terms of sole source. That's what I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, and I take responsibility for not giving you a chance to speak on the, the city manager because it was a public comment, so please accept my apology. because it was a public comment. So please accept my apology. Okay, council.
I, I just want to say one thing. I'm concerned about the safety issue. Jim Moore told us last time that people were going down once a week to change the fans on the clarifiers. And I am really concerned about our staff having to do that. And it's at the cost of four thousand a month. We, we stated that. And I assume that this whole system isn't working as properly as it should. And I think we should go forward with this proposal at this point. I think that it was designed, you know, by this company. And, you know, we don't have to redesign the whole system to go into this that it will fit. So I do think we should move forward and I think we probably should hear from Jim Moore, the professional.
I've got some questions myself. There are some bad things that can happen where you work in this city and thankfully those things have not happened. An emergency would be, you know, one of the tanks
Blowout.
Blow out and, and something bad. The broken arm, would you, I wouldn't call that an emergency, right? Like we are not, you're just under this. You have to spend the money every month and replace it. It's an efficiency thing, but would you call it an emergency?
Absolutely, because would you be out of compliance with DEP for solids being into the reclaim?
But I mean, the broken arm is an emergency?
Yes, without the arm, it can't wipe, the wiper can't clean the solids floating on top of the reclaim.
Right, but, oh, no, I'm saying, but you're replacing it and that's not happening.
Fixing it.
You have a solution, but it's costly. Yes. Right. So, but I mean, when those things happen, we have a solution, but it doesn't, there's a, a full replacement will avoid you from having to go back and do that. I understand. What, what I don't get is the ARPA fund or the, the criteria is when I'm reading this, did we go in and look at the ARPA criteria? Maybe this is a question for John. Did we satisfy their sole source requirements? And was there a checklist like that went down and said, we met that one, we met that one, we met that one? Because what I'm seeing from our city attorney isn't referencing ARPA. It's referencing the CD, CICA. And those might be federal requirements, but ARPA has different requirements. And I, we got to know this, don't we?
We are legitimate in using ARPA funds for all wastewater, stormwater.
Source is the issue.
Projects.
I'm not saying, we can't, I'm not arguing that we can't spend it on water.
Your question is, does the, does the, is there an element, is there an element in what I've received on ARPA that specifically talks about sole source? Not to my knowledge, no.
Non-competitive bidding. So if we go to the Department of Treasury and you look at the requirements on how to spend federal money, we will end up at a place called, I mean, we really, unless I'm completely off in the wrong place, we really don't know where this goes. Don't we end up at C? C two fifty-three?
I don't recall anything on what I've received for this, for the, for these funds that tells me that because it's sole source, I don't even see if it mentioned it.
So, so from the Department of Treasury, procurement suspension and department recipients are responsible for ensuring that any procurement using SLF RF funds or payments under procurement contracts using funds are consistent with the procurement set forth for the U guidance CFR two hundred three seventeen to basically CFR two hundred three twenty-seven is all applicable. This is from ARPA, I mean, this is how you get there. And you end up at CFR two hundred three twenty, which allows for non-competitive procurement only in certain circumstances. Did we not review that? The CFR two hundred three twenty?
When we did, when we designated this project for ARPA, it was based on the type of project it was because that's what I, I'm given.
It works.
Right.
But, but it was not based on a non-competitive bid. These are federal money and that's the issue. Is why do we think we can do a non-competitive bid? The argument is it will cause a delay or it's going to cause
Safety issues.
No, a delay or duplication of efforts are the only two reasons that I've heard that we qualify for. Under Anthony's, the standards he gave guidance on, which is not the, the standards that I'm seeing at ARPA. There's five reasons for non-competitive procurement.
Well, it does cause a delay, right? We know that because if we go other than the way we're going.
Yeah.
It goes from sixty-eight weeks to twenty-four weeks or whatever it is.
Yeah, the Tetra Tech said there was a delay, but we're not factoring in how much time did you start with, with, what's, what's our, when did you start reaching out to Ovivo and, and TSG Jacobs? I mean, they, of course, they're going to be able to get it done because we started, this is, we started the conversation earlier. They've gotten a chance to, to me, that's not enough justification. It's not enough delay. This is not what I say is an emergency, like a tank is busted and we don't have time to go out to bid. We can replace the arms for, is it four thousand a month? If that's what it is, you, you replace that for a month or two. We put this out to bid. We are stepping in very dangerous territory when we're spending ARPA money. I am disappointed that the, what I see, and I will say, if I'm wrong, there's five criteria. One, I'm not going to read them, but this was provided in, in an email to me and, and, and I don't know why we're not following these guidelines and why we're not catching this. Again, if I'm missing it, I'll say I'm sorry, but CFR two hundred three seventeen through two hundred three twenty-seven is applicable. Am I in the wrong part of the world or?
I think this is a, I think this is somewhat confusing the way it's, it's being read. What I, what I would do if you're asking me to justify these ARPA funds is tomorrow morning, I would call the people who are managing our funds, who is James Moore, the auditors, who know the inside and outs of this, and I could get an answer within minutes.
Yep. For sole source. That was already done now.
No. I did not, I did not, I did not consider in this process the sole source portion of it. I looked at, at as these are justifiable funds for wastewater and stormwater. And now this sole source thing is put in here. And if that's saying that we don't, we can't go sole source or it can't be justified, ARPA funds can't be justified because this, then wow, that, that's, that is, I can't believe that that's going to be the answer. Because on a ten million dollars, we have the standard allowance. We're a city one hundred and ten million dollars. These monies now could be spent on just about anything except debt and relieving taxes.
But I'm not arguing, it's how we spend the money.
Because you're looking at the federal, you're looking at the federal, there's a federal, you believe there's a element in here.
Public, federal, state, local is when you have to bid it out. We have, we have our local sole source bid. State has very little, as we saw to say, but they've got their own agency requirements at the state of Florida. Before you go sole source, they got to get a minimum of two bids and one of them has to tell you, we can't provide it. You have to prove it. Then they have to post for fifteen days that they're doing a sole source and they have to reach out and scream to mountaintops and say, can anybody out there provide this? We haven't tried any of those things. The whole last meeting was all about sole source.
Yeah.
And so we agree on the water, but I am warning this council. Our city, until our city attorney can say, based on the technical expertise I'm hearing, this is a, this is, we are justified for sole source. None of this justification was included in the first. It was very minimal. In this second packet, a lot of things changed. We started seeing the words like in-kind replacement. The city used the word rehabilitation in the whole first time. Rehab, rehab, rehab. On this new summary, rehabilitation is completely gone. Because rehab kind of sounds like it's sole source and it works. This is a replacement. There might be some rehab work, but this is a full replacement. And to say that Ovivo is the only ones, what is the width of a fifty-five or sixty-foot tank? That, that, that we can't go out and they might be the only ones to put that product, but there are other pump and, and manufacturers who can provide that. Those original specs that were drawn up for that tank, we had to put it out to bid. I think they're in public records. I was trying to scramble up and see if we have it. We don't have a strong enough argument to think that this is going to duplicate efforts and that this delay would only be justified if this was considered a serious emergency. And I don't think we meet the criteria of an emergency.
It, it would have helped.
The requirements exceed federal.
Would it help council mayor if I confirmed about the non-competitive nature in the sole source on the use of ARPA funds? And that, to validate that, and if that, if that was so, if this fouls everything we've done here, complies, you know, with that, then why couldn't we move forward if we do comply, if it does comply?
I think we need to put this out to bid. Until our city attorney says, no, you don't want to do that. The risk is too high. He says there is no wrong answer. That's what he said. He's like, eh. But city attorney is trying, he provided guidance. He has to rely on the technical expertise. So I feel like that's what I have to rely on and I'm not seeing it. I can al, there's always going to be a delay, of course. I mean, can you imagine if every city said, well, we don't want to go out to bid because a bid will create a delay? I know. And, and duplicating the documents, I don't think is substantial enough to get some engineering. This is too much money from federal mon, funds in the five criteria that were laid out. We don't meet any of the five, in my opinion. But I'm not an attorney and if we wanted an action item, I would say, first of all, verify are the items in CI, are the, the, the CFR two sixteen to two twenty, if he, if he says yes, less, those are applicable, then go in and, and maybe try to, to, to see if we meet them. And/or just completely set me straight and say, no, you're on the wrong path. I'm done. I
Yeah, I, if you look at the financial impact at the last page, it is for complete rehabilitation of the two clarifiers. We do it right down here, but the point of it, I know, the point, the point of it is, is that we don't want it to blow up. We don't want it to go to the point where it isn't functioning at all. Jim Moore has been forty years working on wastewater plants. I mean, our residents have, but our residents said right at the top. They said the most important thing is to, to infrastructure, stormwater.
Sole source it and, and not have a clear answer on whether or not, yes.
In light of time and of the debate, let's just put it out to bid.
I would highly recommend that you competitively bid it because the record from these last two meetings is incredible. I haven't seen any emails from Mr. Campbell or what, what he's saying. You know, it relies, if you're going to, if you're going to go sole source, you got to rely on some technical expertise to justify going to sole source. Yes, it could be a public emergency. Yes, it could be procurement from a single source slash sole source. Based on this record and this, in this meeting and last meeting, I highly recommend it.
It's the safer bet.
I highly recommend it because I mentioned to you before, you're using federal funds. And this hearing that we've had regarding this procurement just convinces me the safest course, the most conservative course for the city to take is to competitively bid it. Don't waste any more time because what your staff is telling you that this existing system is a mess. It needs to be replaced. And now you need to retain engineers as quickly as possible to do the engineering work because Florida law requires that you have adequate specifications and plans to do a competitive bid. So you better get your engineering firm on his job before your whole system breaks down. And as Jim indicated, you're going to have significant issues with your reclaim. I personally went out there and looked at this system. It's fallen apart. I, I'm also, I, you know, regarding the clarifiers, that system is brittle. It's been in there for a significant amount of time. I've listened to more technical experts on sewer treatment plants in the last six months in other cities that, I mean, I can tell you, it needs to be, it needs to be replaced. I mean, Jim will tell you, Jeff will tell you, it needs to be replaced. Don't delay.
Now, let's do it.
Do it and do competitive bid and see what kind of prices you get in this market.
Last time they extended, right? So for now, it's going to cost us more, correct? They won't extend, you know, keep the price.
That is correct. July first is.
It's done. So we don't know how much more this is going to cost us as well.
Cost you less. Who knows?
That's right.
But, but it probably will.
That's a fallacy. That's fear mongering. The fact that I hear a lot is it's only going to go up. No, prices go up and down and they compete and we thought we wouldn't get the extension. Ovivo is a good company. They're respected by them, by our staff who I trust. They'll have an opportunity to bid. And
It, it's a necessity, though. It is a necessity to replace these. You've just heard from our attorney that it's falling apart. That's why they're going down.
I never said we should, I'm not over here saying we shouldn't replace it. I am fully support replacing this. Replace it right now. I'm saying if you're going to replace it, not refurbish it, if you're going to replace it, you, we need to put this out to bid. We don't get to just say, it's going to be sole source without very strong justification. We might be able to put together strong justification, but I'm just not seeing it strong enough. That's it. And I don't want to risk that with ARPA money. We don't want to be on the wrong side of this. And if we, we bid and so we, Anthony attorney, our city attorney has given our opinion.
You don't want to be on the wrong side of it, Mayor. That's why at this juncture, I'm recommending that you competitively bid it.
So he can, he's recommending, we, we're the ones that's got to make the decision. I'm looking for a motion. I'm happy to make it myself. No, Ted.
No, you got to, you better to be dead.
You need to fix this plant.
Mr. Moore, what was the cost of the last time we were out of compliance with wastewater? When things broke down?
Last time, I believe Jeff, it was like seven point eight. Between seven and eight million.
We just learned about this clarifier. Do not take responsibility. It just popped up. It was not in our capital improvement plans in, in the year prior that I combined. He was over there. He was making it work. I, and thank God we have you. You're in there just working at some point like, hey, we got ARPA money. It's like, Chris, like, like, let's get this done. And so I'll be very happy as soon as we can get this project done.
Can you clarify what that seven point eight million dollar was?
That was for the headwork. That was for the study that had to be done on the sewer plant to bring it.
That was a fine?
That was a project, was the project. It was part of this study, Jeff.
Okay, it was a consent order to do things that ended up costing us seven point eight million dollars.
Yeah, we took out the SRF loan for seven or eight, right? Million? And, okay. Okay.
We're making a motion to put it out for bid. That what we need to do?
If you want to, I don't like to make a motion till I make sure everybody's ready for a motion. We can table it, but that delays. I don't like rushing the other way. I mean, no matter what, the fastest we could have anything would be the next meeting. Right? And so they may not even be ready at that time. But if you want to come back for a special meeting, I'm happy to talk through this more.
Can I just make one, one, one comment? If it was found tomorrow that sole sourcing this, that these ARPA funds were compliant because everything we have here, the due diligence we did and all the things that we did, where this package stands now, and it was legitimate. then we would be able to move forward and use these ARPA funds.
That
Isn't that something you would like me to find out tomorrow morning?
What was between last meeting and this meeting? So if you want to continue to do that, the amount of energy that's going to justify sole source could go into putting in the bid, but at some point, we got to
I don't want to slow up, slow up the bid. I'm, but I'm tomorrow morning, the first thing I will do was I will, I will justify the use of this ARPA money to make sure that, you know, because I, I had not read it that way.
Okay.
Okay, but at least I'll do, I, I will do that.
It, it's valuable. And if it is legit and then, then I think we can take action.
Okay.
Take advantage.
And I'll get experts to advise me in writing on that. Okay.
That's up to Todd and I think
If Todd wants me to do that, otherwise I will just step back. Otherwise I will step back and you, you could just put it out for bid.
All right. Well, I, my move that we take no action and the, the, the city staff explores, you know, puts it out to bid if this is, you don't have to put out a bid. I think you want to. So, so yeah, I move that we take no action on this and city staff brings back her the next step, a bid proposal or contract, whatever you need.
Well, if we, if they get the right information, it is all okay. And if all is okay with you. Could we proceed?
Mayor, the bid doc, competitive bid documents are done just administratively, right? Those are not, those don't go to the city council for approval. What went to the city council for approval was award of a contract to Ovivo for sole source. So if the council's not going to proceed with that contract, then staff would just do what they normally do.
When you have an agreement, we'll be ready.
They will go, well, staff will put all the bid documents together with the consultant. When the bids come in and they rank them, you will see a, a request to award a contract.
Sounds great.
That's the way the normal process works. There's no, there's no reason to take, if the council's inclined, you know, wants staff to just go through the normal process of putting together a bid, that you don't take any action on the Ovivo contract.
So don't second my motion and it'll die.
It'll die and they'll
We take no action on this and staff is naturally inclined to fix this problem, you know?
Correct.
And when it's ready for an agreement, we'll, maybe we'll hear about it when it's done. So, okay.
There you go.
Love y'all. It's been rough, but we got through it.
To, to take no action, take no action. And Mayor, I understand because of the time, items 13 and 14 will be on next month's agenda.
I think that yes, that it, that has to happen. Is there anything in there that's going to? Not yet. I mean, you can leave. What, what's 13 and 14? I
Uh, that is the, uh, Kimly Horn proposal about, um, golf carts. And the last one is the rising rents submitted by Councilmember Raymond.
Yeah. Do y'all want to extend to hear your things or do you want to wait? Okay, any council, yeah. I, I think we should adjourn. Can we make those as old business and try to put them at the top of the next meeting to be prioritized? Okay, look, so I'm meeting adjourned.